Jim's missing. Oh, here's Jim, AKA Jane. That's what your phone number says.
[laughing]
All right, you got everyone. And Phil will not be participating tonight.
Phil is out. Okay, so we're down one.
If he does show up, I'll let you know, but he's sitting down.
All right, so Gail, you want to be, I think David voted last time. You want to vote tonight?
Sure.
Okay, all right. If somebody drops out, David will pick up. All right. We are on, this is the Goffstown Planning Board. Today is July 23rd. This is a regularly scheduled meeting. This meeting is being held, at least in part electronically. Some of us are in Town Hall, and the public can participate by telephone and watch on GTV or, I don't know, Facebook streaming, some, one of those things. But before we get going, due to the emergency order that allows members to participate telephonically, I want to let you know that this is being done pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. That's what allows us to meet electronically. You can come to the meeting at Town Hall. Town Hall is open. We have provided public access to this meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means, and the public has access to this and to participate by telephone dialing 603-766-5646, and using the participant code 785645, followed by the pound sign, then you'll be logged in, and Patty will be able to tell us that because she will be able to track it. We have provided previous notice to you, to the public, as to how to access this meeting using the telephone number, and have also provided the posted agenda. And if there is a problem that arises with your access to this meeting electronically, we ask that you let us know, because if the problem isn't immediately fixed, we will adjourn the meeting to be, to occur at a later date when you will be able to have access to let us know. Call 603-660-5000. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote, and we are supposed to start this meeting by taking a roll call attendance. I'm going to ask all planning board members to do so by saying their name, and whether or not there is anybody with them while they're participating in this meeting, which some tell me is required by the right to know law. I'm not convinced, but we'll do it anyways. If you have dialed in from the public and you want to speak, please, when we enter a public hearing session, please hit star nine, and our operator, Patty, will recognize you, and you'll be able to speak, and hopefully I will remember to announce that at the time of the public hearing. So having said that, I'm going to start with attendance for people here in the room. David?
David Pierce, an alternate member.
Tim Redmond.
My name is Barbara Griffin.
Gail LaBrack, alternate and recording secretary.
Patty Gale's staff, also known as Ernestine, the telephone operator.
Peter.
Peter Georgiannis, I'm here by myself, and I'm the selectman's rep.
Karen.
Karen Hughes, and I am here by myself, thankfully.
Kimberly.
This is Jim Raymond.
Kimberly, please.
All right, I'm going to separate Kimberly and Jim on my roll call. Kimberly.
I can't really see it on the line.
And Jim.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Kim and Jim sound the same. This is Jim Raymond. I'm here. Actually, my wife Jane is doing the dishes, but she'll be done in a minute. I don't want to tell her to stop.
We have some staff present on the line supporting us tonight. Sarah.
Sarah Wardy, town engineer.
Thank you. Joanne.
Joanne Duffy, planning and economic development director.
All right, thank you, everybody, for identifying yourself. Phil Devansa is not here tonight. We have two alternates present. I'm going to have Gail LaBrack be the voting member in his stead. The first item of business on our agenda is our usual one. It is to deal with the minutes of our previous meeting, which would be July 9th. Members received the minutes by email and by mail. If they choose, do I have a motion?
Motion, this is Dave Pierce, motion to approve the minutes of July 9. Oh, I'm not.
That's, we were going to shift it for this one. Is there anybody else who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, Barbara.
Karen, Karen Hughes, is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Peter seconded. Are there any corrections or comments in regards to the minutes? Seeing none in the room and hearing none on the telephone, I'm going to call for a vote. Tim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Karen?
I'm going to abstain just because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Kimberly.
I mean, not at the last meeting, I wasn't there for the entirety.
Okay, Kimberly.
Kimberly, I will also abstain, I was not present.
Gail.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are adopted. Thank you, everybody. The next item that we have for discussion is a recommendation to release the remaining casuerty held in escrow for the completion of Kennedy Hill Road as part of the Robert Noak III lot subdivision, map two lot 59A. There is $26,866.53 plus interest. We have been provided an agreement between parties as to the distribution of that fund, and we have a recommendation from DPW in regards to the release of those funds. Sarah, do you want to add anything to that?
That was a great summary. The work has been completed, so we are recommending that the escrow be returned.
Thank you. Can, do board members have any questions or comments on this request? A motion from the board is required. Seeing none, will anybody make a motion to authorize the release?
Make a motion that we release the $26,866.53 out of the escrow, for the escrow account.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Barbara.
Thank you, Karen. It's been moved by Peter Georgiannis, seconded by Karen Hughes to authorize the release of the casuerty as requested. If there's no discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. Tim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
The casuerty release request has been granted. Board members, you've also received comments from Conservation Commission in regards to something we're addressing tonight. You've received a copy of some correspondence in regards to individuals, abutters, in regards to a couple of applications we have tonight, along with copies of some emails. None of those require any discussion, in my opinion, outside the time of the meeting. So the first item to discuss is an item that's being held over from last meeting. We had scheduled a discussion on map 26 lot 23, East Point Rentals 273 Mast Road, to discuss the landscaping of the business. The applicant did not call in. The applicant contacted the town afterwards, and something had come up, and they were unable to call in. So they are on the agenda tonight. Joanne.
Okay, so the applicant is on the phone, and they can explain the details. However, I did send you this afternoon some photos that I had taken yesterday. They have, so the original plan had called for smaller plantings all along the split rail fence, which is abutting the Mast Road corridor, and those plantings, it was hard for the applicant to keep those alive due to the salt conditions and snow removal along there. So they've changed the plan to show six flowering shrubs, nine bright red perennials, and seventeen blanket flowering plants in the center area, in between the exit and the entrance. But they've also added several plantings along the perimeter of the fence, which currently, some have yellow flowers, some are just greenery, but they, they're different from what was approved, but they, they look good. The main question that they were here the last time was the removal of the pines that were at the rear of the property that had been cut down due to some problems with the branches falling, and they were concerned about their customers being hit by the trees. So the trees will be replaced with arborvitae. They're looking to put in 12 arborvitae along the back portion of the lot line where the pines previously were located. The trees will have a mature size of four to 10 inches wide, 20 to 30 inches, I'm sorry, 20 to 30 feet tall. And I've just included some photographs as to what the site currently looks like as of yesterday.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have on the line from East Point, Gail help, I mean Patty help me on this.
Yep, Danielle's on the line, and he can do an explanation and presentation. Danielle, you're not muted anymore if you want to speak.
Yep, I'm here. My business partner Scott Briggs is also on the line as well.
Oh.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Did you want to? Can you say your last name, both of you?
Danielle, you want to tell us your last name? K-U-N-A-T-H. And Scott, could you identify your last name, please?
Scott, yes, Scott Briggs.
B-R-I-G-G-S. All right, thank you, gentlemen. You heard Joanne's summary of what's going on. Is there anything else you'd like to say before the board discusses it?
We're just basically addressing the concerns about the removal of the trees of last time, and we are offering a solution to the lack of greenery, and we're just making sure that's okay with everybody.
All right, so could you, there is a, in our package, we have what appears to be a hand drawn East Port Rentals, one inch equals five fifths, May 2020 diagram. And could you explain what that is supposed to be showing?
So our intentions were to submit a site plan, like our initial site plan, and we drew on it where we would like to replace trees. As you know, there are none there currently. The hand drawing had the intention of just showing you more of a blown up di, more detailed explanation of those trees that we wanted to plant. So those trees would be placed along the fence on the side right next to the end of the parking lot, in between the propane tank and Mast Road.
So if I look at the sheet, the bottom part of the sheet is the island, and the back part of the sheet is the split rail fence along Mast Road?
Yeah.
Okay, and those bushes that you're proposing, there are some bushes in front of the split rail fence now, correct?
Yeah.
And so are these those bushes, or is there a proposal to add more?
It's, I guess I'm not really proposing to add more. There were a bunch in the beginning, but they had died and come back. We were just submitting something that our landscape designer felt like would look really good and appealing for our property.
All right, here's my concern, is that I don't want the file to end up with a piece of paper showing these are nigra bushes along a split rail fence in a number that is not accurate. I don't.
Whatever we submitted, we plan, we do plan on planting, I'll just say.
Oh, you do, okay. Because that, because I think it means you're talking about planting a couple of more along Mast Road. All right.
No, whatever we submitted, we definitely plan on making it come to fruition.
All right, so the sheet, the handwritten sheet is in addition, plantings in addition to the arborvitae that are marked in green on the 2013 plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I thought that the, that the arbor, I was confused between the arborvitae and what the split rail fence was. Do board members have any questions, comments? Tim?
Yep, this is Tim Redmond here. I would like to see the actual locations of these proposed arborvitae on the site plan that was the original plan, or this new version that we're seeing. No, this is dated 2013. So we get an idea of where you're going to plant them, so that we can figure out where the screening is going to be in relation to the fence line.
I was under the impression that, are you looking at the one that we had hand drawn on? Because that's where we want to put the arborvitae. They're in green there.
Yes, I do see those. So they're just blocking those parking spaces next to the garage.
Yeah.
So the pine trees extended the full length of the whole fence, if I'm not mistaken, prior to them being removed. Is that correct?
So there were no pine trees where I'm proposing on planting them. The pine trees were actually from where those would start, all the way, all the way down the fence line, away from the building. So when those were removed, there's no good place in all of the dirt parking lot, really, where those trees would survive, is what I'm being told. And part of the purpose that we understood, the greenery was to be for, was to sort of give a little bit of a barrier to an unsightly thing behind us. So we felt like for our property, and for what you guys are looking for, the location of them where they are currently, would be best to solve everybody's dilemma with us.
So on that same plan that shows?
That's why we put them there.
So on that same plan that shows those green locations, are there other plantings to the left of it that we're looking at that are going to be done, or where do they derive from?
There's no plantings currently, no.
Are you going to put any more plantings down through there?
We have not intended to.
So the block wall that you built, that you store the equipment on, is set to remain the way it's, we can see it from the road?
Yes.
Okay. Are there board members with questions or comments?
Barbara, I just had one other issue. There are some slats on that fence that need to be either repaired or replaced that seem to be missing, that they should also take care of.
That's no problem. We can definitely do that.
Thank you.
All right. This was brought up as a discussion for site plan compliance. They've submitted a request in regards to landscaping. Joanne, how, how do you want to proceed with this?
This is not a public hearing. It was basically to just have the owner address the issues that people were concerned with, particularly the trees at the rear of the property line. And if the board has a consensus that they're happy with this, like I said, I did go out there, and the site looked nice. It's cleaned up, and it's good. So if the board agrees with the remainder of the plantings and the repair of the fence, I think we'll just do, we can do another check on it in maybe another few weeks, and then just make sure that everything's been taken care of.
All right, other board members?
Barbara, this is Jim.
I was going to call on you.
To the extent that changing the planting, plantings on a previously approved plan, this is Tim's theme, we need to have some record. So it seems like what they're doing is requesting an amendment to a previously approved plan that we can find is not a material change and waive the hearing, but it still, still should be shown as an amendment to an approved plan. So we have a way to enforce whatever it is we're agreeing they can do instead of the plantings as shown on the plan. So it's not just, yes, it's fine, go ahead. There has to be some formal record that, no, this is the amended plan, and you're obligated to perform in accordance with it. I think it's a little more formal than Joanne suggested. Well, we can do it with a simple amendment, but I want, I want to be clear that that's, that's really what they're asking for.
Right, we're amending the site plan with updated documents.
Now, I guess my question would be, does that require a public hearing?
I think in the past, we've agreed that amendments of this nature are not material because it doesn't change the, any of the impacts on the abutters if they perform as proposed. So we have not required public hearings. Historically, nobody's made an issue of our policy to do that, so I suggest we could do it here.
Does anybody on the board think this is a material change? Speak up. Jim, would you like to make a motion?
I guess I'm on the spot. I make a motion that we.
Well, I was going to call on you anyways, so.
The approved, proposed amendment to the previously approved site plan, as the applicant has requested, and find that it is not a material change and waive the hearing, and, this is where you fill in the blank, and agree that the amended, or marked up, plan as submitted by the applicant will be the, go in the file as the amended landscaping plan.
And contingent on continued maintenance of the fence?
Oh, correct. And any approval is continued, yeah, whatever Barbara just said.
Is there a second to Jim's motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Peter seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a roll. Tim?
No.
Peter?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. The next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item of business tonight on our agenda is map 18 lots 30 and 32. This is a completeness review, site plan amendment review, hearing for a proposal to add a towing business, Jorker Towing LLC, to an existing commercial property that currently has an automotive repair collision repair business and an automotive sales business currently located on it, KCK Enterprises LLC. Owner and Jorker Towing LLC is the applicant. This is located at 578 Mast Road. It's zoned commercial. This has been continued from the July 9th meeting. The applicant and owner are present. We've received some information, an updated plan, some lighting information, and a waiver in regards to landscaping. Joanne, you want to tell us where we are since the last time we heard this?
Sure. So the applicant has been working on cleaning up the site, and I did receive an update today from both the applicant's son and the applicant's attorney. You all should have a copy of Attorney Panchiotto's letter that is dated today, where she goes through each of the items that I have listed on page 19, where I thought I was going to recommend that the board discuss, starting with number three. There's some issues that are still outstanding that are really board decisions. And then as we go through their Attorney Panchiotto's letter addresses each one. She's not able to be in attendance tonight, but I believe the engineer and possibly the applicant are on the phone.
Is there anybody on the phone for this application? Could you hit star nine?
They're here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
There isn't an abutter on the phone, but the applicants are here.
The applicants are here.
Okay. So I'm not sure how you want to do this, if you want to just dive right into the remaining concerns, or review where we were at so far.
Why don't we review where we're at so far?
Okay, so there were many issues that were raised about the condition of the property, including the fence and the landscaping, lack of striping, things like that. So the board did find this plan complete. If I could make one correction on the staff report on page nine, it says, under overview, about halfway down the page, latest revision date, that should be changed 710 versus 630.
Thank you.
They did submit an updated plan and addressed some of the issues. They did submit an updated plan and addressed some of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. Um, there are some that, that, as I said, still needs to be resolved. And they provided, um, some answers to, uh, things like the storage trailers and the, the, uh, the old cars that are stored there. Um, they also provided a, an additional waiver for the lighting plan, since the lighting plan-
Where's that?
They didn't, well, they don't have a lighting plan, but the old lights that were on the plan, um, did not meet today's standards. So they have hired someone to make, uh, those, they're, they're still asking for a waiver, but they've hired an electrician to take a look at the lights, and he has ordered the appropriate visors to the, to make sure that those light, lights will be downcast. Um, so there are two waivers that still need approval, the lighting plan and the landscaping plan. Um, there was much discussion at the last meeting about the landscaping and whether or not they could conform to today's standards. And I think it was decided, um, the board was in agreement that there's really not much space on that site to add any additional landscaping. Um, so from there, we just go into the staff comments and the items that need to be addressed, which, which are listed again on page 19, understand final recommendations, beginning with number three. If you look at Attorney, um, Panchiato's letter-
Well, let's, let me, let me see, uh, let me propose, because there are a number of issues that we need to go through, but I'm not sure what the applicant is prepared to address, given it's their attorney's letter. And I'm, just for purposes of expediency, with the board's permission, I'm gonna ask the applicant whether or not they want to go through the conditions with, with the attorney's letter or have Joanne summarize it. Mike, do you have a preference?
Let, let Joanne summarize it, and then we'll-
Then you'll supplement. All right, Joanne, why don't you give it a shot to go through? So everybody should have the staff report on page 19. There is a letter dated July 23rd. You should have it in your email. If you're present here, you have a paper copy of it. All right, Joanne, why don't you give it a shot, because there's quite a few things?
Okay. So as far as the stockade fencing, according to, um, the, their attorney, they did speak with three different fencing companies. One has looked into it in a little bit more detail. Um, they're, they're busy right now, so they're trying to get quotes from each one. But each company did say that they believe that there could be the possibility of, uh, doing some repairs on the fence versus replacing the fence. Um, I'm not a fence person, but I just want to remind the board that the fence is over 30 years old. Um, well, I'm not sure what the lifespan of a, of a wooden stockade fence is, but, um, I just don't want to be in the same position two years from now where the fence has fallen and actually has hurt someone.
Well, I'm gonna raise an issue in regards to that, um, that because the fencing, which I know is being recommended to be repaired, um, the issue becomes if contractors, and I understand this to be true generally, work is being scheduled at least eight to nine weeks out. So that means, my guess is, this applicant wants to get moving on this site to start using it before eight to nine weeks out, which might turn into be nine to 12 weeks out. So I want the board to, to keep in mind, when we deal with this, exactly what we're gonna do with this fence and how it deals, how it impacts the operations that may or may not be getting approved to go on it. All right. Thank you, Joanne.
Okay. So the next item is the removal of the two older cars that are currently stored on lot 32. Um, I was told by, uh, Pat Panchiato that the cars that Mr., um, I'm sorry, I keep calling him Mr. Jorker, but that's his real name. Um, the owner, owner of Jorker's Towing has agreed to move those cars to another spot within the fencing area on the same lot, but away from the residential. And, um, the attorney has suggested that perhaps Mr. Paris could purchase newer covers so that it looks nice and neat versus the way it currently looks. So again, that's something the board would have to consider. Um, they have, uh, they've been talking to someone who is supposed to be coming over in the next few weeks to, uh, install the hard pack. And so they did find someone to do that work, and, um, they're being scheduled for that. Um, there was a discussion about, at, at the very end of the meeting, at the last time, about the snow storage and if, if the junk cars or the antique cars are moved from that corner, could they use that for snow storage? And my concern, well, I have two concerns on that. My first concern would be piling snow, if, if, you know, depending on the year, we have more snow than others, but piling snow all winter in that corner against this old fence, if that, if that fence remains. Um, or even any, any new fence, I think it would have a detrimental impact on the integrity of the fence. And the abudders are concerned about if there is a large pile of snow over the winter and then in the spring it starts to melt, what sort of an impact it will have on their properties, depending on how quickly the, um, the ground, uh, thaws and how quickly the snow melts. It could, it could be a problem. Um, the disposition of the storage trailers, they've emptied out one of the trailers, I believe it's the white one, and there's pictures that were sent to you this afternoon from the owner's son, showing what they've been doing over there. Um, the other, so that's being removed off-site. Uh, the other trailer is going either to be placed in the same place if it meets the setback requirement, or somewhere else on the lot. But I believe if the board does decide to allow it to go somewhere else, we need to see that location, at least make it as a condition of approval. Um, because again, we don't want to run into this problem again in the future. Um, and there's, there's fire codes and things like that, too, that run into, uh, play as far as being so many feet away from a building. Um, the groundwater monitoring wells are still not shown on the, on the plan. I could not find them. The staff has a concern with the existing traffic flow, and I just thought maybe some striping of arrows or some signage might be helpful. The way the traffic pattern runs is you enter from, uh, Tane Street, and you enter and exit from Joffrey, and it's just like one clear shot across. And then you have the, um, the entranceway on Mast Road. So if you're coming in from Joffrey, you sort of bump up against the traffic that's coming in the opposite direction, but there's no exit. So I just thought it needs to be a little bit more clear on the plan as to what the traffic flow is now that an additional business with more movement in place is being added. And again, this is, you know, entirely up to the board to discuss. Um, and then the last one is DPW had recommended, and I think Fire Department had also recommended that they show an area on the plan for severely damaged vehicles and how they would control them. It would have to be some sort of a surface where the oils or whatever's leaking out of them would not contaminate the ground. And I haven't found that on the plan either. There is a list of conditions. These items that I've just mentioned, I've included in the conditions unless something tells me, you know, otherwise, if you decide not to, to pursue any of these, um, that certainly can be seen.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Questions from board members? Comments? All right. So the board is aware, what we got in the packet this week was the landscaping plan waiver request. The lighting plan waiver request was in the previous package of materials. So if you're looking for it in this week's package, you need to pull out the previous package. And obviously, we were given various pieces of correspondence and other items in regards to this plan previously that were not included in this packet. So, um, I grabbed most of the previous stuff, but not all of it. Um, but just so if you're looking for stuff, you understand that's what's going on with some of the paperwork here. Um, and you should-
It's actually been very hard for staff to manage this because, um, it's ever-changing every day, so we're getting various updates. And the best we could do is, after the staff report has been mailed, is to continue to send emails with the next update. So it's, it's been hard, and it would be helpful if there was a cutoff date, but as of the moment, we don't have anything in our regulations about that.
Well, and in fairness to the applicant, um, we gave them the opportunity to get on to this agenda tonight because we knew that the applicant wanted to try to get moving with the new business. And so he sort of got the plan in, in time to come out, but there was other stuff that needed to be done. But so we've all sort of fast-paced this, so thank you to staff for trying to stay on top of it. Any other questions from, um, board members? So the letter we got today from counsel, um, mentions a number of things that, um, does not, Joanne didn't go over. Joanne, did you read anything in counsel's letter from the applicant that indicated we have a, a disagreement in regards to, um, particular conditions?
Um, not really. I mean, I think the one thing was that they would like to be able to keep those older cars on-site, but move them away. I had made a recommendation that they be removed entirely and that both trailers be removed, and they're suggesting that the one trailer be removed. Um, they do have a question about the handicap striping out front as to where that should be located, and they wanted to speak with the board on that and have Mike chime in. Um, there is documentation about the, the entrance on Mast Road that was discussed a few times now and why it was, um, never widened, I mean, why it was never reduced. Um, and I think that they properly addressed that issue. Um, and the other thing, again, is the removal or replace, not removal, I'm sorry, replacement or repair of the fence, which I'm still of the opinion that it would be better to just start over again and put a new fence up.
And as far as you know, the other points are generally agreed to? The striping, part of the striping is already-
Yes, um, there was one issue at the end where they were concerned, like you had mentioned earlier, about whether they would have to wait until everything was resolved before Jorkers could actually obtain approval for their site. And again, that's a board decision.
Okay. All right. Board members, any questions? Anything else before we hear from the applicant? Okay. Do you want to come on down, Mike? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Dahlberg, Lance Overe, I am not an engineer, for the record. And I appreciate Jim standing up for my character the other day, but I don't think that attorneys are bad people. But I thank him for that. I need, I need to say a couple things, uh, straight for the board before we go here. Uh, the lighting waiver was, was, was suggested to, for us to apply. The landscape waiver is, was suggested for us to apply for, only because the, I guess the landscaping regulations have changed from 2010 till today. The landscaping that's shown on this plan conforms with the 2010 approval, for the record. I don't think anyone disputes that. The plants have been changed because they died, but they've been, they've been replaced. The fence is not 30 years old. If anyone cares to go look, uh, Google Earth Street View, 2011, August 2011, you can see it's a brand-new fence. Excuse me. It's a brand, it was replaced in 2010.
Yes, it's easier.
And, um, we can prove it. The, the traffic pattern is fine. That, that entrance on Pertain Street, um, is not gonna be used by, by Jorker Towing. They've already said that, that they'll use the Mast Road. For Chuck's other businesses, Joffrey Street, um, is convenient for people. I will say this, that from the existing, the edge of the existing parking spaces to where the dumpster is located is 24 feet. That's a 24-foot travelway for two cars to pass, so it's not, um, it's not narrowed down any. It complies with the, the standards for today. And Joffrey Street is convenient because it's a, it's a lighted intersection. But Jorker has said they won't use it. Whoever else uses it, I think, as, as a normal business, uh, pattern from what's been going on there since the 50s, it is what it is. The snow storage, we, um, this has always been a tight site, and the, the previously approved site plans, always had to note that the, the owner or occupant shall remove snow as necessary. If it, if they can't store it on-site, they have to truck it away. This is no different. We've shown the snow storage area because we were asked to show it. Um, obviously, they can't pilot on the fence because they'll have to replace the fence. And the testimony at all, uh, at the last hearing was that all the abutting properties are higher than this property, um, because their, their property's higher and the water runs off onto our property and makes some of the fence rotten on the bottom. So that's, that's in the record. Um, that's what we're gonna stand by. We know it to be true. And everything else in Pat's letter, um, we've agreed to. The only correction for Joanne on her statement was, we do have a lighting plan, it's now sheet two, um, of your packet. That was submitted, um, on that last Monday, after the last meeting. So we do have a lighting plan, and we do spec out lights that comply with your ordinance. There is a way to retrofit, um, these lights onto stations that are there now on the existing automobile repair, uh, building. And that's gonna be done. The, by the existing 612 square foot garage, that, that light, that you pull with the light, it's always been there that way. The lights that are shown on the existing garage and office area of 612 square feet, 188 square feet, are, are man door lights required by code. And they're, they're just regular door lights. They don't shine on the neighbors, they don't shine up in the sky, it just lights the empty way per code. Regarding the storage trailers, if one trailer can stay and it has to be in a location that complies with the setbacks, Mr. Paris is gonna have to tell us where he would like to put that. We can certainly show it on the plan. If not, he'll have to remove it. That's, that's pretty, pretty straightforward. I believe Attorney Panchiaco's letter to the board dated today, uh, pretty succinctly addresses where we've, where we started, where we, what we've been through and where we were at. We've agreed or provided everything that the board has asked. Mr. Jeff Roy and his wife would really like to get going. Mr. Paris has made a good faith effort to, um, address the concerns of the board. So that having been said, I'll, I'll pass it back to the board, but I, I think that we've demonstrated that we're ready to go and we've addressed all your concerns.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna open it up to board members for questions, please. You do have the lighting plan, that is an addition. There were two things, I think, on the plan. There were two things, I think, on the plan that Joanne talked about, the groundwater monitoring wells. Are you going to add those?
I will certainly add those. I don't know where those are, but I didn't want...
It sounds like somebody in the Parrot's family might know.
I have a map of the mic I can provide to you.
And the other item is, you'll note on what used to be the bike shop, Jake's Bike Shop, there was traditionally a one-space handicap spot there, so designated. It doesn't comply with the ADA standards of today. So what Mr. Paris would like to do is to take the existing three parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to the front of his building and convert that to an ADA-compliant handicap spot. And he has plenty of other parking on-site for his use that would comply with the numbers in the parking section of the site plan regs. And that would be the only change in whatever notes and approval conditions we would certainly add to the plan along with the wells and then that parking location.
Let me... Board, if you'll indulge me. So the one-space handicap notation would come off?
Correct.
And the existing three spaces would show one handicap? Would it still be three spaces, or however many spaces?
It would be one handicap space, ADA-compliant, and one regular space.
So it would be two?
That would fit there, yes.
Okay. Okay. Other questions from board members? Anybody on the phone?
Barbara, this is Jim. The real question, well, the matter is addressed, is they're looking for further time to complete certain improvements, so as you raised as an issue, that the Barbara... I mean, Joanne's conditions do not address fully some of the operational issues of the new use that I want to make sure we've included as specific conditions, hours of operation. Maybe they're in the application already, but I think for clarity, we want to make sure anything like that is a specific condition.
Jim, the hours of operation are included on the plan itself under Note 12.
I'm getting old and have trouble reading small print. I see it now. Thank you.
I couldn't find it. I knew it was there, and I kept going up and down, and I just couldn't see it. Would you have any problem adding a condition that the Mass Road entrance will be used by Jorcas towing for entrance and exit?
No, no problem with that.
Okay.
That's what they testify to.
That's what they're saying, so... I mean, the practical reality, I don't think they can really use Pertain Street anyways, that opening isn't...
Too many movements. They can come straight off of Mass Road and then...
Right. That's the easiest movement, but...
Right.
All right. So...
But when they exit, it's enter-only.
What do you mean? What, Joanne?
If the Mass Road driveway there is an enter-only, where are they going to exit the property, onto Joffrey?
We'll have to relabel that entrance to...
Is that from the 2010 plan, that that was an enter-only? Or was that from your original thought of what this was going to be?
I honestly, I don't remember the genesis of that. We can certainly change it. Well, no. The enter-only was from the last site plan, but that's not practical for Mr. Jorcas, but he's the only one that's going to do that.
Well, but I don't know where this came from, because the prior site plan had a different entrance, so...
No, same entrance location. It was just narrowed up by a few feet, but I believe that condition was requested by
Part of the narrower?
No, the request by the board for the landscaping trucks was to come in and out of Mass Road and not on Pertain Street.
Okay.
So we would still be in compliance with that. We would just have to change it and have the condition on the plan that says Jorcas towing will use that as their entrance and exit for their tow truck.
Okay. Tim?
Well, Mike, under the current configuration, you have an exit on the side of the building close to the old bike shop. Is that an exit that he could possibly utilize by going around the existing automobile repair and auto body shop to exit, and then you could still maintain the enter-only driveway?
Yeah, if those storage containers don't remain there, that is a possibility. It's kind of tight to...
Just asking as a way to...
Well, he...
What are you... Which spot are you talking about, Tim?
Where the storage containers are presently located.
Oh, to loop around.
If that aisle was opened up, he could drive around the building and still use Mass Road as the exit where the arrows indicated on the plan.
That's pretty tight, and there's actually a fence there right now. I don't know whether that's going to stay or not, but you couldn't drive through there with the fence.
Mr. Joff Roy, Jeff Roy, has indicated through his testimony that he would use the Mass Road entrance, the main Mass Road entrance, for in-and-out only. So I think you can just make that condition for his use.
And Mike, could you change that to exit/enter on the plan itself?
Yes.
Any other questions from board members before I open this up to public hearing?
Barbara, this is Jim. I'm looking at the plan. I want to make sure I'm looking at the right one. It has a revision date to 7/10. Is there a later one?
No.
Oh, that's it. The conditions about inspection, Number 17 and 18, I guess, given the past challenges with this property and keeping it in compliance, I want to have any conditions like inspections specified as, you know, with a performance criteria, not just inspect it regularly. What does that mean? I'm just... It's a little vague, and that gives me concern. Also, I understand Mike just talked about the lighting, but the lighting on 22, Condition 22, I don't think that comment, I don't think is accurate. It's... they're going to replace the light fixtures, so maybe he hadn't revised this after Pat's letter, but I understand that the lights will be brought into compliance. He says if not, found not in compliance. No, we're requiring them to be brought into compliance now. There's no future to that. And I'm still uncertain about this light that he's claiming is exempt. I thought we addressed that and said, no, it isn't. With the expansion of the lighting and use of this lot, we're going to go back and look at all the lights.
That was not my recollection at all, Jim. And we're seeing with the lighting plan that we're going to, we're going to bring the lights into compliance.
Note 22.
So that note in any event should be changed. We can talk about that, that solitary light.
Jim, are you looking at the lighting plan?
I am not. I don't find it.
All right. Do you have the mailing this week? And it was a little confusing in the package because it was put together after something that says Floodlight Light Visor.
I have that.
All right. So there should be a paper clip on that, and if you take that, there are... there should be a folded plan behind that. It took me a little bit to find it.
Let me look for a minute.
Okay. I won't say what I was saying about Patty in my mind as I was trying to find this, and then I realized that in the material, it was there. Tim?
Just for Jim, it does say in Number 22, lighting, that those lighting fixtures found not to be in compliance shall be brought into compliance. Number 22 on the 7/10/20 plan.
It still does...
But that says we have to make a finding. I'm not going to go out and look at the site. We're telling them now as a condition, they have to be brought into current compliance, whether they are... we're not... nothing for us further to do. This suggests we have to go out and essentially give them a citation because their lighting is not in compliance. No. We're saying as a condition of approval, those lights will be changed. The burden is on them, not on us, to do that.
That's what he's arguing, is that those lights, you know, found, he thinks that the duty is being shifted to us.
The electrician says that the existing pole, U-Pole with the light, that fixture is in compliance with the ordinance.
All right. So why don't we just change Note 22 to say no new lighting is proposed? All lighting shown on the plan will be brought to compliance, will be in compliance. You don't even have to say...
We'll take out the clause.
Right.
If, then.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
So it's a positive...
The intent of Note Number 22 is to say that we will bring the lighting into compliance. We have a lighting plan. I don't think we need a lighting waiver. I don't even think that's on the table because we've submitted a lighting plan.
Well, and if your electrician is saying that the U-10 pole is in compliance, then there's nothing to be done.
Correct.
Then you don't need a waiver for lighting.
Correct.
Okay. So that's the applicant's position, is no waiver needed for lighting because everything will be in compliance?
Yes.
We got rid of one dissertation on five needed things for a waiver. David?
On the 10-July plan, you show Note 25. It reads, "The existing dirt gravel area to be occupied by the towing company is to receive a proper layer of hard pack." The draft conditions that we'll read later in the evening mentions four inches of hard pack. Could the word "proper" be replaced with "four inches"?
Yes. The reason for the proper layer was, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting whether or not it was dirt, which it's all sand, or is it gravel? How much hard pack do we need to sustain the use? That's why I use the word "proper," which has that connotation of it's got a function...
Are you suggesting a value different than four?
No, we'll go with the four, but that's the reason for that word.
And hard pack is only effective if it's compacted? Could I have the word "compacted"?
Give me the development regs. It might be in the development regs.
Absolutely.
Oh, you gave it to me. Other questions from board members? Does board members... Do board members agree that given the applicant's repri... Was that Pete?
We'll just back around.
Do people agree...
I'm sorry, Barbara, I didn't catch that. Can you say that one more time?
Do board members agree that given the applicant's representation on the lighting, that no lighting waiver is needed? If anybody thinks a lighting waiver is needed, speak up. All right. Let me deal with the landscaping waiver. This comes to Jim's issue where it's a new plan, so you need to comply. The site, the regulations have changed, and there is a landscaping waiver in your material. And Joanne said that her recollection is, we pretty much talked about this last time, and she thought the board had sort of agreed that there really wasn't anywhere else on the site to do landscaping. If board members think that there is some landscaping that needs to be done that has not been proposed, can I hear from you? Okay. So, Mike, you just want to formally go through this for me. If you don't have a copy, maybe Patty can shoot it.
Barbara, I had a comment regarding Note 21.
Here, pass it down to Mike so we can look at it. All right. Hold on. You got it? Okay, thanks. All right. Go ahead, Joanne.
It states, "Jorcas towing has agreed to not store any vehicles in the 25 by 40 area." But I'm not sure if that covers Mr. Paris storing any vehicles in that area.
Well, it does not, and the attorney has represented they will be moved, so is it all right if we just say no? If the no can be changed to... So we're going to change 21 to say...
No vehicles.
No vehicles will be stored in the 25 by 40 area.
Barbara, if I may, that goes to a point I may think, that we are approving a use of land, not just by Jorcas, but by anybody. So to the extent there are references to Jorcas, it's whoever is on the land. You know, they transfer this, which they can do, to somebody else with the same conditions, it should apply equally to them. So I don't like it that the conditions, that seem like they're just for Jorcas. No, they're anybody using this for the approved use.
So we'll get rid of the reference to Jorcas. All right. I haven't heard from any board members on the landscaping. I'm looking through my development regs for waiver language. I will find it at some point. Mike, you just want to run through the...
Yes, thank you. We are requesting a waiver for a landscaping plan, and I have five reasons. The existing landscaping is and are replacements to those placed for the 2010-approved plan. The number of holly and juniper bushes match the 20... should say 2010 plan. The existing landscaping berm is in compliance with the 2010 plan. The existing landscaping is located in the only suitable location on-site. There is no increase in the area being used on the property. Therefore, it seems that additional landscaping should not be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that the language you were looking for?
No. Well, I wanted him to go through it. I can't find... I still can't find it in the regs.
Jim knows where it is.
It was in last week's packet, and I just can't find it. All right. Any other questions from board members before I open this up to public hearing? All right. Actually, let me ask the applicant before we start this, start the public hearing. Let me ask about this fencing issue in regards to operations. So I'm assuming that a plan can be completed and signed before eight to nine weeks, if this is approved tonight, given the conditions that you can have the plan done.
Yes.
But the fencing will not be done. Whatever we're talking about, a fencing company coming to do, will obviously not be done because of just the delay in getting things done.
Yes.
And I'm assuming the applicant would like to try to start operating on the site before eight to nine weeks. Would that be a fair assumption? I'm seeing a lot of nods.
Yes.
So, Joanne, given what the board may or may not approve for fencing, do you have any suggestions as to how to deal with the fencing issue?
Not really. I mean, usually, we don't provide the certificate of occupancy for any sort of business like this until all the conditions have been met. And normally, the conditions have to be met even before the plans are signed.
Right.
Barbara, may I be heard?
Jim?
In the applicant's defense, I guess, all these existing conditions that weren't enforced, and this is not a new site plan, but rather an amendment to a previously-approved site plan, so it's a little different than new construction where we don't give certificate of occupancies until the whole project is done. This is an existing business that they're looking to modify. So although I typically want conditions satisfied, given the realities of the world right now, I think reasonably could allow some of these to be done with some hard deadline, which is similar to what we did with the party that was just before us on the landscaping plan. We told them they had to come in by a certain date, which is this year, this spring, with the new landscaping plan. There are other improvements, though, that I find it difficult for them to do once they're in operation. So, but I'm putting a fence repair maybe in the first category, and other things that would be required for them to operate safely on this site, like surface that they're putting the cars on. I'm not so sure I'd want to extend.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would agree with Jim, Barbara. This is Peter. I would agree with Jim on the surface, and I guess I would want to ask him what his feelings are on that. But in order to put in that hard pack, that has... the whole area would have to be cleared, and then David asked if he had it compacted, so it seems to me that would have to be done before anything starts being used. So it seems to me that would have to be done before anything starts being used, because the whole reason for that is to stop any leakage that may go into the groundwater. Or into the ground.
Well, Tim, I guess that's a segue to you.
I was going to keep quiet because I sort of agreed with everything that's going on right now, so.
Wow.
Lock up the works. Yeah, we should all just go home now. All right.
It's a given that that service will be done before Jorkeer operates.
All right.
As far as the fence goes. I'm a firm believer, after all these years, that deadlines make things happen. So if we have hard deadlines, then everyone knows about it, one of two things is going to happen. It's going to get done, or someone's going to come back with their hat in their hand and ask for an extension with good cause. So, that having been said, you know what the rough timeframe is, probably need a little cushion, weather, et cetera. We're fine with that.
All right. And I would expect that everything would be done. I just recognize that getting contractors out to look at a fence is going to be problematic to get it done in the next couple of weeks, so.
I called seven people to get prices to seal my driveway. I got one, and they all said they'd come out and look. So, you know, it's hit or miss.
Yeah, sure. All right, Mr. Paris?
The hard pack-
You want to state your name for the record?
Charles Paris.
Thank you.
I do have somebody that's coming next Wednesday to level the lot in the back and put the hard pack in, so they're going to be there next Wednesday to start performing.
Start doing that. All right. Okay, and then finally, before I move on and forget, Tim is helping me out. Mike, in regards to the landscape waiver-
Mike, in regards to-
You agree that granting the waiver will not affect the purpose and intent of the regulations?
Yes.
Okay. And for the reasons you've stated on the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else from board members? Staff? Sarah, you have any concerns with this?
I do not.
Okay.
Conservation's comments?
And Joanne, Patty, what about conservation?
The conservation didn't have any issues or concerns with this proposal.
Okay.
But they- but I do want to say about the fencing, like if they can- like if he repairs it and gets some to certify, like he hires some to certify the fence, is it stable, the architectural of it?
They have fence certifiers?
They probably could get some of the certified.
Yeah, no. Tim?
I would hope that any of those items would be covered in our requirement that a final as-built plan be submitted by the surveyor or engineer of record that the plan was completed in accordance with the plan.
So I just had a few questions, just so things are clear. So you're going to allow repair of the fence?
Well, we sort of haven't gotten there yet, but the issue is whether it's repaired or replaced.
Okay.
It is probably not going to happen in the same timeframe as the rest of the issues on the plan, because the reality is if we grant the landscape waiver and the electrician is either certifying everything meets the plan as for lighting, our lighting plan, or he's going to change it, and we've already got the hard pack coming in or whatever it is next week, and the striping has been or is in the process of getting done, we're looking at a couple of weeks of work there. The fencing repair or replace is not happening in a couple of weeks. I mean, that's just the reality of getting work done now. Tim?
I think for clarification, we should, before we're done, we should identify the items we're willing allowed to go on, but there are certain items that should be done prior to the begin of business.
And that's signing- prior to signing the amended site plan? Okay.
To clarify, I'm meaning a fencing company going and saying this section-
Oh, okay.
Like professional company that does fencing to say, no, this really-
I'm looking for a gig to do in retirement. I'm thinking I'll become a fence certifier.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, it's a split rail fence. It's pretty nice.
That's still on the books. Stockade fence.
No, 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 this is Stockade, but I figure I-
Is no removal that's listed on lot 32 be removed as a snow along the fence area, as a snow storage area? And possibly, like, allow it along the fence, along the main street, and then anything else has to be removed off-site?
Why? I mean, I sort of- I have to say, I sort of agree with the applicant. It flows downhill. They may or may not use it. It's marked, and it sort of keeps them from using it for anything else.
Because it floods us. It floods us.
So... Okay. All right. All right, well, it's board members. That's something that we need to discuss. All right, let's- if there are no other questions, I'm going to open the public hearing at this point in time. This is a public hearing on the application before us in regards to a site on Mast Road. This is 578 Mast Road, owned by KCK Enterprises, currently running Paris Autobody. This is map 18, lots 30 and 32. This is an amendment to the site plan. This is zoned commercial. This is a continuation of an application that was previously submitted. I'm going to ask at this time if we have any member of the public who likes to speak, and thank you, Ms. Benner, for- sorry, for cleaning up. We're getting a little slacker on that here. I hope those are our wipes, right?
Yes, yes, yes. And you do have abutters online.
Okay. And so I'm going to ask, for purposes of public comment, that the people who are present and want to speak on this, speak first, and then we'll go to people on the line. So, Mr. and Mrs. Benner, why don't you both come up at the same time? It's how we handled it previously.
Of course, I got to sit like I'm sitting in a swamp. I'm wet. Yeah, whatever. You ready for me to duff on myself?
Yeah, go ahead. Identify yourself for the record, you know.
I'm Dana Benner, 12 Joffrey Street, and I'm one of the abutters.
Okay.
We're right back to square one on this whole thing. We started off, this is the third meeting that we've been to, and I remember the very first meeting that we were here, we were talking about just the lots that are behind us, where the towing company is going to be put in. And then one of the board members says, "Well, you can't do that because you got to look at the whole lot as- the whole Paris complex as one place." Now, we're going back to saying, "Well, just where he is, where the new- this tow yard is going to be stuck in." So we need to figure out, are we looking at the whole thing, or are we looking at just where the tow yard is going to go? The fact about the fence was brought up, that it was less than 30 years old. I've been there for 35 years. The fence went up because of a lawsuit that we had with Mr. Paris's father about 32 years ago, when he cut down all the trees on that lot. That's when that fence went up. Believe me, I would know if somebody replaced the fence right behind my house. You go to work one day, the fence is there. You come back, the fence is gone, and then the next day, the fence is back again. Unless you're drinking heavily, that doesn't happen. So that fence was not replaced. It might have been repaired in a few spots, but it was not replaced. Now, the thing about the snow removal? We've been doing a lot of research. You guys know we've been doing a lot of research because you've been getting a lot of stuff from us. We've contacted DES. I'm in touch right now with the EPA for federal advice. We've been- we've looked over the plans for 2010, where the board approved for the rock solid landscaping, where this all goes back to. And my original argument when we came in for that very first meeting was the 2010 plan was not adhered to. It never was adhered to. Nothing was ever adhered to. So why are we even thinking about amending a plan that was never obeyed in the first place? I'm looking at a board meeting minutes from July 8, 2010, which was regarding the rock solid deal. And it was brought up that the fence was in disrepair and shall be replaced or repaired then. Didn't happen. There was a- let's see, Mr. Lowell made a point that said the site with the land in question, and this goes back to the June 10, 2010, planning board meeting, was the site all the way to the back of the property, the 40 by 80 or 40 by 100 strip. It states right on there from the prior plan, from this one, that it was not to be used for commercial purposes. And the very next line down, Brian Rose says, "Yeah, that's what it says on the old plan, not to be used for commercial purposes." Okay. So now we get cars and stuff put on there at that- before rock, you know, before all this, even before this 2010. Those were taken off. Rockcrete was put on. It was used for commercial prop- even though prior plans didn't say anything. Now, we're getting back to today, and we've, like I said, we've talked to DES, and we've talked about, oh, yeah, by the way, the plan doesn't show where the wells are. He doesn't know where the well. I found them. It's public record. You go to DES, you can get that map. He's the surveyor. He put the plan together. He can't find out where the wells are for the runoff? Now, I'm not an environmental expert. I didn't take an eight-hour class and get a little piece of paper that says I'm a DES expert. Just like I've taken four or five law course classes, and I'm not an attorney. It doesn't matter. Water does run downhill. You are absolutely correct. And she says, Mrs. Paris said in the last meeting, that, "Oh, we didn't have anything to worry about because our land was higher." Water runs downhill. And maybe, or perhaps, the exact words, I don't know. I don't have it. I've read- I watched the replay and replay and replay numerous times. But it says that it flows downhill, and maybe our wells will catch it. So we contacted DES to see about the wells, which we, as taxpayers, are paying for, and they're being monitored. But the last monitoring said they couldn't monitor some of the wells because they were covered by those tractor-trailer, those trailers that are in noncompliance. The fire department said they were in the way. They're covering the wells. They couldn't read the wells, so they can't get an accurate reading. Now, if those wells overflow, if this pollution that's the brown yard seeps down, it goes downhill. Everybody knows water flows downhill. So it means it flows into the groundwater. If it doesn't catch in the wells, it goes into the groundwater. Groundwater goes into that little stream that flows down behind shaws, or feeds into any of the- under numerous little streams that feed downhill. So I'm glad- I think the people down who live along the rail trail, if they have wells, they're going to really want to know about this pollution that's being flooded into their wells. If it doesn't get into wells, it goes into the piscata quarter, and then- which affects fish and wildlife. It affects the rail trail. How much money did we spend on the rail trail? It's a beautiful place. I don't think I really want to walk down there anymore, knowing that, you know, there's a brown yard dripping contaminant down the stream. And if you put a place- if anybody's ever seen a head-on collision with a car, where does the fluid go? You got antifreeze. You got motor oil. You got transmission fluid. You've got brake fluid. You've got every fluid in the world. And Mr. Joker- Jocker, I'm sorry, said in the very first meeting that he can unload a car in 30 seconds. He said he'll back that sucker right up there, open the gate, drop it down, and he's gone, and we're never going to know he's there. Really? You're going to back in? You're going to drop a car arbitrarily in your lot in 30 seconds and be gone? But what's happening to all that fluid that's leaking out of that vehicle? Is it properly placed? Is there a containment? There's no containment area on this plan that I saw. I might be wrong, but there is no DES-approved hazardous containment area in there. So what are you going to do when there's a spill? Regarding the snow removal? That snow, if anybody- if you live in New England, you know that when they plow snow, it's got salt and everything else that's in the snowbanks. Just look at the front edge of your lawn on the side of the street. Well, the same happens when you park a car and it leaks oil into the snow. It leaks gas into the snow. It leaks brake fluid into the snow. It leaks all that stuff. The snow acts like a sponge. They pick it up, they pile it against the fence. Okay. Some of it's going to roll back into the yard, but some of it's bound and determined to get sucked into my yard, next to my garden, next to my neighbor's garden. There's a reason why it says on these plans, the July 8, 2010, that it's supposed to be pulled off the lot. If you want to do snow removal, it's not pile it up over there. It's take it off the lot. It says that for a reason. Now... Whether he wants to get started working or not, I don't care. What I care about is the fact that my wife and I bought that house 35 years ago. We've put a lot of work into it. It's our home. We raised our daughter in it. We have our grandchildren over there. Why should I give up my peace of mind, my sanity, because this is driving me up the dang wall, for him, when he has done absolutely nothing to live up to the agreements? The fence has never been taken care of. That's part of the 2010 agreement also. If the planning board is not going to enforce the plan, what makes you think that he gets in there and, wow, nine weeks from now, maybe we'll get a fence? No. Next year, maybe we'll get a fence? No. It's never going to be the right time. It's never going to be this. It's never going to be that. I didn't know about it. I thought he took care of it. That's a common phrase that comes out of Mr. Paris's mouth, because when things went wrong, we have always tried to go and knock on his door and talk to him about it. We never wanted to take any of this garbage. So, you know, we also talked to Derek, and he told us to ask you, Madam Chair-
Derek?
Derek?
Horn?
Horn, thank you.
Sorry. For permission to be able to speak again, because every meeting so far, they've called the plaintiffs back up, Mr. Paris and his crew from Bedford, who don't even live in the town, which is beyond me, but they come up and they sit at this table after we speak, and they get a chance to, like, to rebut what we're speaking. I know this is not a court of law, but the last words, it should be ferred out. So Derek Horn asked us to ask you if you would allow that. That's your choice as the chair. He also asked, told us to ask that-
I love it, what other people decide. I get to do as chair.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to be rude to you, ma'am.
No, I know you're not intending, and I'm sure that's what Derek told you. I'll be talking to Derek.
He also said that we should ask that everything be put on the record.
Okay.
Just to make sure that it is on the record. But-
I'm not sure what Derek meant by that, but I think I understand.
But I'm just having a hard time with this, that is, what it seems to me from listening to the board, and the board members had no questions tonight. And it really, it really kind of got to me because we're the residents. He's a business. He lives in Bedford. He- no matter what he does to that property, I'm the one that has to get up at 3:00 in the morning when I go to work and look out my bathroom window, or look out my window, or drive down the street and see what's there. I'm the one that has to look at it when I come home at night. I'm the one that has to look at it on the weekends when he's at home enjoying his home or wherever he is. There isn't a person on that side that is a Goth Town resident. They don't live there. They can draw the pretty pictures, and they can say, "They're going to do everything, but nobody's going to enforce it." It's never been enforced before. I'd like to see Goth, you know, the planning board, if you're going to make rules, enforce them, and hold them accountable to it. Because we're the ones who- Because we're the ones who live there. They don't. And that's what I'm, I kinda ran off, and I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Benner. Mrs. Benner, did you wanna say something to him?
Yes.
I wanted to ask Mr. Benner a question.
Okay.
Sure.
Could you please review the statement you made about the plan that said the last forty by a hundred could not be used for commercial purposes? What was, what plan was that? Or was that in the minutes, or where was that recorded?
Let me see, where, where was it?
Well, why don't you give him the paper?
No, no.
No, no.
Why don't, why don't you look for that, Mr. Benner, in the meantime? Mrs. Benner, if you wanted to speak, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Would you give us permission after, to rebuttal if we have to?
I, I, I am not quite sure that I am. Mrs. Benner, the procedure for the planning board has been for the public comment, it's a notice section. I'm not quite sure. I suppose as chair, I have discretion to do lots of things subject to the board ruling me out of order, but we'll, we'll see where we're at. It would be helpful if comments were kept to the plan and what, as a planning board, because you know we have jurisdiction over the land and the plan and not the people. So, we're dealing with the business and operation and trying to do the best we can, and we appreciate your position. So why don't you let us know what you have to say tonight, Mrs. Benner?
Well, first of all, I would like to say, I don't agree with the fact that, that there's no impact, okay? And I was told that regional impact, okay? I, I looked up the meaning of regional impact, okay? Regional impact, it means to belong to a particular region, district area, a part, all right? So Pinnardville is a part of Goffstown, all right? So it does have regional impact. And also, the water from the Piscataqua River also flows into the Merrimack River. I found this out today, because I spoke to DES, so it does have regional impact. So I don't, I can't see how you, you're saying that there's no impact. There's a lot of impact here. We're talking about contamination, okay? Regional impact listed, but not limited to. Oil, gas leaks, hazardous material, contamination of water, gardens, contamination of gardens, a ground, air contamination, health risks to human, humans, wildlife and fish, loss of value of homes, at least maybe fifty thousand in my case if this goes in, because this is an ISO, and the contamination in my garden, okay? Unsightly of, unsightly, unsightliness of wrecked vehicles, increase of crime due to towing of repo vehicles and potential break-ins. You take something away from someone, they're gonna come back, they're gonna try to get it. I used to work in finance. We've seen that all the time. There was a survey that I showed you also last time here, that repos increase crimes a lot, okay? And when the, the halt is on, well, right now, they can't, they can't repo right now, they can't take people out of their homes because of the COVID-19, but that's gonna start in a few months, and you're gonna have, you're gonna be flooded, okay, with repos and more, and more foreclosures. So there's gonna be more crime going up. That's what it said on the survey, on the internet. Also, oh, noise, odor, lighting problems, nuisances, and also, snow, snow piles create flooding, okay? Mr. Paris, not this Mr. Paris, but his father flooded us one time, all right? It was horrible. So if they pile snow in that lot that's in back of us, all right, we will get flooded. It has happened before, and it was on our dime, we had to clean up everything, all right? Because it's a high water content area to begin with, so if you're adding, when the snow melts, okay, it's gonna flood. We have a, a little shed out there, it's gonna flood our sheds, it's gonna flood our yard, it's gonna flood our basement. And for the record, if this happens, I will go legal on both the town and Mr. Paris, okay, for the cost of fixing it. It's not fun to be flooded. We already spent it. We already spent-
Yeah, Mrs. Benner, your comment is, is that you would like not to have any snow storage on-site? You would prefer for them to continue to remove it completely from the site?
Right, right. No piles, no piles in back, okay? Because it does cause flooding and thousands and thousands of dollars, okay? And a towing company that runs twenty-four seven, it's on his website or Facebook site, okay? He runs mostly on emergency calls, so that's an impact also. Extra fire hazard, loss of enjoyment, okay, to us, to the neighbors, to the abutters, and right now, all this is causing me so much stress. Three weeks, I've been piling information and trying to make my case, and I'm telling you the truth, and I'm getting, giving you backup. I have like a suitcase. It's making me sick, so it's impacting my health a lot, okay? And, and speaking to DES this past week, do you know how many tons of contamination they've removed since 2008? Forty-eight thousand tons, which is ninety-six thousand pounds of contamination. And there's still new contamination coming out of that, running in the river as we speak, all right? There is new black stuff they found in the reports. I've given you the reports, I've given you all this, okay? And, and also, there's forty-seven people that signed this. So you add all these property values, okay? It's, it's much more than what Mr. Paris has, okay? So our tax base is higher than his tax base, and these are the people that are infecting it. And then on the DES site, I also found out that I was on this other site, a thousand-dollar, I mean, a thousand-foot radius potential. So anyhow, what this means is, if you're within a thousand feet, you're potentially impacted. So it's not only me, only me, okay? It's two pages of people that this impacts, okay? And it impacts the people also by the river, too. So the, the lot that we're speaking about, okay, known as Lot 28, 728 and 729, they're non-conforming lots. They've never been conforming, okay? Before Mr. Paris bought these lots in nineteen eighty-nine or so, they were, they were there as a buffer. Since nineteen nineteen, they were a buffer. They are little lots that no one could even do anything with, neither residential, commercial, okay? Because they're less than five thousand feet, square foot, okay? And right now, I believe it's a hundred thou, uh, excuse me, I'm getting my mixed, my numbers mixed up. Right now, residential, I believe in our area, you have to have ten thousand square feet for residential. Commercial, you have to have five thousand. These two little lots don't even have five thousand square feet, okay? And I believe that the surveyor is in dispute with what's on the old plot plans. There's sixty-two feet difference. I, I also sent you all this information. I know the town doesn't get into disputes, but there is a dispute there. He's coming out with sixty-two feet more than what the nineteen nineteen plot plan has, okay? And also, I'm gonna have my, my property survey again, it's on my dime again, okay? But I will have my property surveyed. So if he puts in a new fence, he better have it resurveyed again, because there is a discrepancy, because if he puts it up in the wrong place, he's gonna have to take it down, okay? And I sent you all the proof, and it makes sense, you know, that, what I'm proving. So that's another issue, okay? And Mr. Paris is already on the brown list, on the front part of the property. He is not adhering even to the DES's rules, okay? Because he's, he is potentially gonna contaminate the back of the property, okay? He's blocking wells, that's against their agreement. That's major no-no, all right? I have that in paperwork, and I send it to you. Those big trailers, okay, they've been blocking the well that they're supposed to be monitoring since before 2018. So that's not in compliance with the agreement that he has, all right? Our taxpayer money, all right, every time we buy oil and gas, we pay taxes on that. And we've already spent a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to clean up the site, and he can't even move his trailer since, at least before 2018, so they can monitor this well? That's, that's terrible. You know, this is, these are major things. These aren't little things here. And also, there's another well, too, that he let it accumulate water, and he's not supposed to do that, and, or liquids, it might not even be water. And they weren't able to monitor that. That's in the report that I sent you also, all right? Oh, so my goodness. So with all this, I mean, it should be a no-brainer that we can't accept this, okay? The, the lot's not in compliance, okay? It's a non-conforming lot, okay? There's contamination in the front, we don't want the contamination in the back. And yes, okay, the flow would come on our side, because the property, my property is not higher than his, we're pretty much level, all right? You can see that in the fence, even what Joanne sent, and I sent you pictures of my property, all right? And so anyhow, that, that's, it's gonna come on our side, you know? I have grandkids, I don't wanna contaminate the grandkids either, okay? So what else do we have here? We have a lot of stuff, okay, a lot. All right, it's pictures that I got from the DES environmental compliance site, okay? They tell you not to put stuff with oil on ground, okay, or rocks or anything. It has to be on a solid thing, okay, such as concrete or pavement. So wrecked cars or any cars, anything with liquids in there should not go, even on hard pack, okay? It shows that in their site, okay? Should all be paved, that yard should all be paved, and it should have a curbing also, to let all the stuff, if it flows, to go in his yard, not in our yards, all right? That, that's a really bad thing. If you let this occur, it's gonna go in the soil, even if it's hard pack, all right? It does, it does not, you know, that's not in regards to the, the recommendations, okay? And also, I've contacted the DES, and I'm gonna try to put a restriction on his site because he's not in compliance with their rules. Okay, it's gonna be a couple of weeks, all right? But I, I showed him pictures when, when Big Al, the junk man, was there, all right? All the stuff that was there, it could already be contaminated in the first place, and he wasn't supposed to even allow stuff like that. I have pictures, I sent him, and I, I believe you, you got pictures too before, all right? And I'm bringing this up because it, it does have a lot of, it has to do with this also. So right now, the gentleman at DES is looking to put a restriction on his site, all right? Because it was not in compliance, all right? He's not, and there's, he's, there might be something, someone too dumping new stuff, because they're finding in the reports new fresh oil, okay, in the, in the, in the wells, all right? So anyhow, this is something that we're allowed to do. I can put a report in to try to restrict that lot, because he's not in compliance, his contamination, I'm on this list over here, they're looking into it, there's pictures too. When Big Al was there, okay, there was like, oh my gosh, pesticide stuff, oil cans, there's containers, it was, it's bad, it's really bad. So anyhow, just beware of that, all right? And also, there is, in the report that Dana found also, okay, the setbacks, okay, were supposed to be the whole lot, okay? And then an extra ten feet from the commercial lot, it reads right there, okay? So there's not supposed to be anything allowed in that lot, okay? It says, "Adjust the setbacks next to Map 18, Lot 32 to be fifty feet from the edge of the residential zone, and ten feet from the northern line of Map 18, Lot 32." All right, so this was for a landscaping company that didn't have any buildings, so these setbacks didn't have anything to do with a building. So this is how the plan was approved. So the landscaper wasn't even supposed to use that, that lot. He was supposed to use ten feet from the residential line, and I have it here, okay? If you want a copy of this, you should have that. So that's very important, okay?
That's, that, just, just, that's, that's the same, that's the planning board minutes, July 8th, 2010, page eleven of eighteen.
July 8th, 2010?
Yes, sir.
The page?
Page eleven, page eleven of eighteen pages.
Thank you.
Sir.
And reading the ordinances, okay? This comes from the ordinances, 1.3.7, okay? It is, you folks are supposed to conserve property values by preventing the harmful encroachment of any incompatible uses. Well, this use does not look like my residential neighborhood, it doesn't look like the urgent care, the Rite Aid, it doesn't look like the, the bank, it's gonna make my property go down. It doesn't fit at all, so it's a major impact. And it says so right here in the rules, that you're not supposed to do this, okay? And it says that, again, if you read that, 1.3.7, "To conserve property values by preventing the harmful encroachment of incompatible uses, and by providing for the control and regulation of those uses which adversely affect the character development and the value of the property." And I have a real estate broker's license, and I've spoken to a couple of other real estate people, and this could affect the abutters by fifty thousand dollars. It's a lot. You know, you're gonna put an ISO company next to us, okay? And if you look, I have pictures I could show you, we have a nice neighborhood, for the most part, everybody keeps their property up. We're neat, you know, we don't have junk cars and a whole bunch of stuff in our yards and stuff like that. Also, Rule 3.3.3, changing in a non-conforming use, okay? A change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use shall require special exception from the zoning board, all right? So this is not, you know, this is not good over here. I don't think this is regarding the, the, the rules that we're going to. And if there's an overlay district provision too, okay? We're residential, they're commercial, so the, it says, the, the highest restriction should apply. So in other words, if I, if our zoning says you have to have like ten thousand square feet, from what I understand, you're supposed to have ten thousand square feet to do something, not five thousand, from what I understand. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but that's what I understand here. Okay, and also, this goes back to 3.8 nuisances, nuisances and hazards, okay? This definitely, from the other business it was, and it's gonna become like the same, same thing as the other business, like Al, Big Al, the junk man. It says, "If something becomes an excessive annoyance or nuisance to other properties by the reason of unsightly, unsightliness, which wrecked cars are, or to the excess emission of odors, dust, fumes, smoke, noise, heat, glare, or excess accumulation of junk, or unreasonably increasing the fire hazard to adjoining properties as measured by the fire insurance ratings." Well, my, my insurance is probably gonna go up, because who wants to be on, you know, on the site where they have all these junk cars with batteries and stuff? It's, it's a fire hazard, okay? Also, I still did not find anything that says impound lots are allowed. Has anybody seen anything in the zoning? Can they show me where that is? I have not found anything at all. So an impound lot is not allowed. Okay, a couple more things, okay? It says motor repair, vehicle service and towing, including bodywork, they're only allowed four cars per bay. So that would be eight cars, not like twenty-five cars parked in the back of my lot, okay? So there's, there's laws here. So, you know, he's totally, totally not, not in all this at all, okay? And, okay, also, "The town has interest and duty to protect contributing, contributing groundwater to these water resources for a greater public good," okay? So you're, it's your job to protect our groundwater, okay? And again, okay, it says also, okay, in the rules, that the Piscataqua River is federally, federally design, designed, I can't even talk anymore, designated as a wildlife and scenic river, okay? So you're not protecting that at all, all the junk that's going down there. Okay, all right, no, I'm not gonna stop.
Thank you very much.
But anyhow, I have all these things, okay, that, that's against all this. So please, don't vote for this.
Can I answer Jim's?
Tim's question?
Jim's question?
Sure.
You asked me about the thing about not using that lot as a commercial?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That is the Town Planning Board minutes, meeting June 10th, 2010, page five of fourteen. Thank you. Okay, sir.
All right, I'm sorry if I went on, okay? I'm sorry, I'm just upset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking. Is there anybody else present in the room who wants to make a public comment? All right, Patty, is there anybody online who wants to make a public comment? And public comment would be, I would request from Goffstown residents?
There's an 0842 that just flagged, and I don't know if that's Phil's cell. So, 0842, you're not muted if you want? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, that's Mark Tarian, I'm at H Opry, I'm in a butter.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mr. Tarian.
Should I go on? Hi, everybody. We stay at home, we're watching along on TV, there's an eight-second delay, so hopefully we're not, we don't hear any background noise, I'm muted, it's TV. But we, Joanne mentioned that it might be better for us to call in, so we decided to stay at home and listen to her and do that. Just wanted to share a couple more thoughts. This is the third meeting in a row that we've been joining in. We, we have no desire to be continually bending your ear over and over, but we do wanna get our voice heard as well. Tonight, just a couple thoughts, there are a couple things we wanted to share in response to some of the, some of the things the, the flyer said is, as far as the fence being replaced in 2010, we don't know. We moved in in 2013. But if that was the case, it's alarming how quickly it deteriorates to the level it is to where, again, a couple weeks ago, a thunderstorm blew it over, to where many spots in the fence are falling over, where, how much rot there is. Last week, Mr. Paris's lawyer said that the ground on our, our lot, which again is pretty flat, and does look of some degree to Mr. Paris's lot, but he said the pressure, she, but the pressure of the ground was causing the fence to be unstable. This time, Mr. Mike, the surveyor, sorry, I don't remember his last name, he said that there was snow and water from our side is causing the rot. We're just kinda, again, and again, I mentioned it last time, but there's no mention of how much damage is being done when cars are being backed into it, and how every time they've done repairs, it's been really not great work. So, so again, the point where the thunderstorm blocked, locked down this part of the fence that had already been repaired, and there's a part near our, closer to our yard that And there's a part near our, closer to our yard, that has fallen, almost fallen in a couple times where it's been leaning significantly, and again, this is a place that's been repaired. And so, honestly, we're just kinda getting tired of hearing how the relatively flat land, I, I can't see other than, you know, being a surveyor, it's pretty flat. To say it's sloping and that our ground's under pressure, now we're saying if the water is causing rot, it's really surprising to me. And again, I would ask that, if that's the problem, that either the fence be raised up on his property a little bit off the ground so there isn't rot, or, again, they'll be looking to how old it is exactly, because if it rotted that quickly, that's surprising. And then also, if he could just move the fence back to where it is on his property, so whatever they're claiming that is coming from our property won't be an issue anymore. Once again, we, we use, we go to the car repair shop that Mr. Paris owns, we have nothing against him personally, we don't wanna continue to come to these meetings and try, and be in opposition. But it's a little, it feels a little disheartening that it seems like we're trying to make sure we hurry this along so he can get his company in there, but we're not worrying about him getting done things that should've been done ten, fifteen years ago. So I would just really ask that the board would be very careful with watching who, who does the fence repair, 'cause I'm sure it's pretty easy to find someone who can just say, "Oh yeah, replace it, repairing is fine, doesn't need to be replaced." You know, if you call enough places, you'll find one that says that. But I would just really ask that the, the town would, would keep an eye on it and represent us too, as you have been, but it's just, it's a little bit concerning, like I said, a little disheartening that it seems like we're trying to, so hard to get Mr. Paris to where he needs to be, but there's no, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of accountability that's happening for what's happened in the past. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online who'd like to speak as part of the public comment on the application before the town for five seventy-eight mass roadmaps, eighteen lots thirty and thirty-two? Seeing anybody, Patty?
Please press star nine if you would like to speak.
If somebody has pressed star nine, you are not muted anymore, and if you identify yourself, we'll hear from you.
Star nine, you are not muted anymore, and if you identify yourself, we'll hear from you. Star nine, you are not muted anymore, and if you identify yourself-
This is Godbout. This is Godbout, can you turn down your, your TV?
Hello?
Hi, if you could turn down the volume on your TV, it's interfering with the-
Yes.
Please turn down the volume on your TV.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. This is your, Godbout.
I live at eleven Patane Street, and I, we abut Mr. Paris's property. And I just wanna say that the question of the fence is a real issue, especially with us. And I'm talking just for myself, not for my husband. Let's see, we retired in two thousand and thirteen, and prior to that, we had, or my father-in-law had problems with the fence. And I remember visiting him and taking pictures of the fence because it went, oh, at least a year before it was fixed. And I tend to agree with Mr. Tarian that if this is a new fence, it deteriorated very quickly. And, and we retired in two thousand and thirteen, and five, well, it would be six years ago, this coming winter, that Big Al plowed, he was clipping snow in that lot, and he plowed into the fence. And it's taken six years for that fence to be fixed, and it's still not fixed yet. And I understand that it's difficult to get fencers in to repair such a large piece of property with fencing, but if you repair that fence, and this is my own opinion, it's a cheap fence. I've compared it to other stockade fences where there's, there are bars across going horizontally, which gives the fence more strength. This fence does not have that, and I suspect that it's one of the cheaper stockade fences. I, I hate to do this, we retired and we do not want to cause any problems. This is very, very upsetting, and we want to be good neighbors to all the abutters, and we wanna be good neighbors to Mr. Paris. He has been very nice to us and has agreed verbally to do these things, and we just, we just hope things work out. But I have to agree with Mr. Tarian on the fence issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Godbout. Is there anybody else on the line that would like to speak? Hit star nine, and you'll be unmuted, and we'd like to hear from you. Patty, is there anybody else showing up?
Nope.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna close.
And I wanna note that we have lost Karen.
Okay.
So if she's listening, Karen, if you're listening, you are no longer on the phone.
You've been lost, okay. Joanne?
Yes?
You have any comments after the public comment in regards to statements about prior conditions on plans and in minutes?
Uh, no, I, I mean, I think we have to go by the plan that is in front of us, knowing that this is an amended site plan, and, and the conditions that were outlined back in two thousand and ten were part of the record, and they are now looking to amend some of those items. So, I, I will agree with the abutters that the site has not been properly maintained over the years, particularly the fence, and that's why my recommendation was that the fence be replaced and not repaired, because I've seen it in person, and, you know, again, I'm not a fence person, but it's in bad shape.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna ask if the applicant wants to respond to anything in public comment? Mike Dahlberg is indicating he does.
I do, and Mr. Jeffroy wants to speak. Do you guys hear his portion of the business?
Okay, why don't you both come down? We've allowed him to speak before, so I'm gonna allow it again.
Regarding the, the two back lots, what's lot thirty-two, I think it is?
Thirty-
The questions before were before that was zoned commercial. It's now zoned commercial, it was residential before. So from the nineteen ninety whatever site plan, we, we had that restriction, no commercial uses there because it wasn't zoned commercial. But it's now zoned commercial because the two thousand and ten site plan allowed the commercial landscaping business to occur there.
Okay.
That's, that, to clarify that, that, that issue. It's zoned commercial, it's part of the property.
And there was a zoning change between two thousand and ten and today for that lot?
We hammered that out.
Patty's, Patty's saying yes.
We hammered that out before the first hearing with the staff.
Okay, all right, Mr. York?
Jordan Jeffrey, owner of Jocker Towing. So in regards to us making noise and everything like that, sending down one of my employees as well as my wife, we've come to the conclusion that in every way, shape, or form, we are gonna try to not drop off vehicles at night at the lot. I did acquire another tow truck, so it kind of eases the stresses of the abutters of making noise, commotion at night like that. So typically, there would only be one tow truck running at night, so there, therefore, you know, if there was an accident, that'd get dropped off, and the rest, the vehicle would be secured on the truck in my residence, which has security cameras, and then dropped off the following morning during business hours to not cause any nuisance to the neighbors. Also, concerning the fence, my wife and I, as well as Mr. Paris, had conversation with the abutters at the first meeting, telling them that my insurance would cover any issues going forward after I acquired a certificate of occupancy. They don't know me from, you know, a hole in the wall, unfortunately. I mean, it's gonna have to, gonna have to build that relationship over time, but they don't know who I am. I've told them, like I said from the first meeting when we met them, after the meeting, I've told Mr. Paris, "Let me take care of it, let me take care, let me be responsible for that fence from here on out. If there's an issue, come to me about it." Again, it's my insurance gonna be covering that, so if that fence falls over, one of their kids gets hurt, somebody gets hurt, it comes down to my insurance, not Mr. Paris. I don't want this to keep falling on Mr. Paris. This is more my responsibility, not his. I'm the one that's put the time, the effort, the money, all the investigations, this, that, and the other, you know, to come this far just to get shut down and say, "Come back again." I've put my heart and soul into this. Yeah, I run a twenty-four hour business, am I working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Absolutely not. Most of the time, I'm, you know, cleaning my truck, I'm hanging out with my kids, doing business stuff, I mean, looking for ways to roll my business, this, that, and the other. As far as the environmental part of it, I'm pretty sure we've covered that aspect from day one, as far as tarping, collecting fluids at scene, on scene. As far as, you know, vehicles being crashed and a nuisance, if his vehicle is over six feet high off four tires, is that vehicle even legal to be driving? I mean, I'm pretty sure, I saw an SUV out there, that's, you know, a mid-sized SUV, I don't know what SUV can see over a six-foot size fence, but anyway. So I said, we're trying to, I'm trying to come up with any kind of thing to- We also don't do repos, too, just to cover that, get that on the record, I do not do repossessions. So therefore, there's no crime that's gonna be happening. Gonna have security cameras, gonna be working for the police department, as well as the fire department and ambulance, 'cause I'm gonna be towing for the community. I'm pretty sure everybody in this room has dealt with that broken down vehicle at some point, who do you call?
Okay, thank you.
So, first of all, I have done everything I could on my part. Nice of them, you guys have any questions for me? Ask me. Mike's not the tower, Chuck's not the tower, I'm the tower. Regardless of how they've done business, how I do business is a totally different thing. Every review online, I figure it's gonna speak for itself, so I'll have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board members. If you go to your packet, the areas that appear to be not in compliance as prepared by Joanne sort of cover a lot of the things we just heard about. And one of the main things is the first thing listed, which is the fencing, either replacement or repair. So I guess I'd like to hear from people on the fencing. Anybody in the room? I'm not seeing anybody from the room. Anybody online wanna talk about this condition?
This is Jim.
Thank you.
Barbara, what exactly are you asking? Are you asking if we wanna replace the fence or repair it? Is that what you're asking?
Right, this is, this is a condition that has been recommended by Joanne to replace the stockade fencing. The applicant has said through its presentation tonight, its letter that was received from its attorney, and in previous presentations, that they don't believe the fencing needs to be replaced, that they will repair it as recommended. So this is clearly a condition of the site that needs to be addressed, or maybe the board members don't think it needs to be addressed. So I, I wanna see where the board stands on the fencing. Tim?
So, I think it would be unreasonable to ask them to replace all the fence. I think if they assume the responsibility to repair it to the satisfaction of this board, then we should allow them to continue to repair it and not require them to replace the entire fence.
Other board members.
This is Jim.
I agree with Tim.
This is Jim, I agree, I'm not sure what the standard is. The purpose of the fence was to provide an opaque, the standard to provide an opaque barrier between the residential and the commercial lot. And I, I think the standard would be if there's any breaks in that wall, those have to be promptly repaired. And we have to define what it is we're talking about as an acceptable condition, and not only does it have to stay up, but it has to continue to provide that visual screen at all points. If that can be done by repair, that would be acceptable, but, and looking at the pictures, and there are gaps, and not just question of the fence falling in, the fence staying up and fulfilling its intended purpose.
And basically remaining perpendicular to the land surface.
Yeah, we can define what it has to look like and what its function is, it has to stay upright, perpendicular, and the slats have to be connected with no gap.
Okay, other board members. And I'm gonna move on to the next disputed item. The removal of the two junk cars. It is proposed that that, that they will be moved to another area on the plan, and out of, there will be no storage in the forty by twenty-five foot area that abuts two residential lots. Board members, does anybody disagree with that? Or want something else to happen? Jim?
When Joanne finishes doing the dishes, I'll ask her to order me a new phone. What, how did those cars get there? Was that ever an approved use, or did they just arrive?
My understanding is they just arrived, and the owner claims the storage is allowed on the site.
Well, but he's allowed to put on the site what's allowed by the site plan, and there's no site plan that allows storage of old vehicles. The fact that it may be permitted by zoning is, is a separate issue. It's still subject to what the site plan allowed, and they were never shown on a site plan, they just, I'm gonna suggest they should similarly leave. I don't think we should stop telling while you put something on that wasn't permitted by a site plan, but, oh well, we're gonna let you. I don't think that's, with this property, that's been a problem, and I think in general we shouldn't.
I think, I think, I actually am for removal of the cars, I think they should just come off. David?
I'm for removal of the cars, and my reason is that this is a plan, we're seeking to approve a plan that's gonna be a certain towing company bringing cars in for storage of a certain time. These, these are not cars that the company's gonna be towing in.
Tim?
So I, I think Jim makes a good point, that the prior approval for the site was for a landscaping company, and those cars were never showed on that prior plan. So I concur that these cars should not have been allowed to have been left there, and they should be removed from the site.
Anybody else on the junk cars? All right, I'm not seeing anything. Installation of a minimum of four inches of hard pack in the entire area being used by the towing company, it's my understanding that is agreed.
To be compacted.
To be compacted. Any further discussion by board members? Snow storage? I guess I, I- Was there any snow storage on this plan? From the two thousand and ten plan? Mike, I'm asking Mike, sorry.
The note was that they will store the, the intent of the note was, and the practice was, that they would store snow on site where they could until they couldn't store more, then they would haul that off-site.
Okay.
That's the same with any commercial site.
Right, I understand, but there was snow storage shown on, there was an anticipation that there'd be some snow storage on site, it wasn't all snow will be removed?
Correct.
Okay, that's what, that was my question, I guess. Tim?
So, the abutters have made a good point in that when you do plow a yard that could possibly have leaking fluids on it, you are gonna plow a little bit of the gravel and the possibility of those fluids into a snow pile. That problem, that is a problem for allowing snow storage, or how you deal with snow storage, whether you store it on a, a plastic surface until springtime, or something until it melts out, and then remove the plastic, like when they do a contaminated site. I'm not sure of the methodology, but they do make a good point that the snow most likely will be contaminated snow, and they, they shouldn't, they should consider what they're gonna do with that snow. That's one of the reasons why the city- That's one of the reasons why the city doesn't dump the, the snow through the old Notre Dame Bridge into the river anymore, because there's, it's so much contamination of the snow when they pick it up on the city streets in Manchester. I know that for a fact.
David?
I concur with, uh, Tim. Uh, plowing snow on hard pack, inevitably, you're going to skim up some, the top of soil, and it's going to be accumulated as a, a bank of soil wherever the, you know, where the snow is melting, and over the years, it becomes a berm. And if that is contaminated, then it's the soils in that area is contaminated.
Other board members? All right, so having said that, is the proposal to remove snow, or what's the proposal?
Or come up with a, with a plan that could store, could store the snow in an environmentally protective way.
Well, isn't one of the recommended requirements that a spill prevention and countermeasure control plan for the storage facility be submitted to DPW? Sarah, you have any thoughts on this? Sorry, I should say somebody's name before I'm going to throw a question at them. I know you're at home on line...
Sorry, for the doorway. I haven't been muted, but my husband had to go to work for the baby now, so I am muting myself.
Okay.
I, we don't really have any comments on it.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? All right, so snow storage appears to have been raised as an issue. I'm trying to figure out whether it is an issue, and it is for two members of the board present tonight.
Barbara, this is Jim. I, I, I have to confess, I don't know enough about it. If you take contaminated snow off-site and dump it on somebody else's field, you're going to contamination, so I don't know what the solution is. We raised an issue. I, I don't know how to solve it. I'd like to get somebody who really knows. Maybe, maybe Tim does, but I don't know how best to address it. You know, my silence is more out of ignorance, concern, but, but I don't have a solution.
We may, we may have to defer to the engineer for an opinion on a responsible way to snort, uh, store that snow, allow it to melt, collect any contaminants, and then remove the contaminants at the end of the season.
Well, isn't that a DES thing, then?
I don't think DES gets involved in it very much, to be honest with you.
All right.
Barbara?
Yep, Peter.
Go ahead, Jim. Barbara, whatever decision we make here, does that affect our decisions on snow storage in the future?
Well, the difference, my difference, Peter, would be that if the lot is going to have the possibility of fluids leaking from a car's, on a gravel surface, that's one condition. Uh, snow scraped off the Shaw's parking lot, or the Hannaford's parking lot is a paved parking lot. They have catch basins in place with oil sumps and, and oil removal devices, which oftentimes we require. So there is a differential on the different types of snow storage, snow removal processes.
Well, we have other lots in town that have the same situation.
They are not in front of us for an amended site plan.
I understand what you're saying, but just in the future.
Barbara, would the best solution be to just remove it off-site?
For where?
Well, I mean, that's not the board's problem. We have snow removal off-site all the time. We don't say where they have to take it. I, I mean, it's a, the front part of the lot is paved, is my recollection.
Yes.
So no snow storage on the gravel portion of the lot?
That works.
There you go. Solved the problem.
The applicant appears to say that's okay. So no storage on the, on the gravel, or, and, and that little loop that I don't think is going to have, okay. All right, so there'll be no storage on non-paved surfaces on the two lots.
And that'll be a note on the plan? That'll appear as a note on the plan?
Yeah, and that will appear as a notice on a plan, so note number 11 will be amended. Okay. Board members, everybody all right with that solution? I know the butters don't think any of this is a solution, I understand that, but this, just for the record, I just want to say, um, it is the planning staff's interpretation and the planning board, I understand our opinion, that this is a permitted activity in the commercial zone, and given that it's permitted, um, this is not something that we can just say, "You, you can't do it." Um, and the applicant has represented that it is not repossession, um, and so we consider this different from something as in an impound lot. So I just wanted to get that on the record. The next disputed item is the storage trailers. Hi, little baby of Sarah. There has been a representation that one is coming off, um, and one will, might be left on the site to meet, um, setback requirements, and there's been a representation, if it's left on the lot, it's going to be put on the plan. And I would assume that it's going to be left, it will be not on any monitoring wells, which are going to be shown on the plan.
And it needs to meet the fire department's requirements for, um, setback from the structures.
Well, I'm assuming when they said it would meet setback, that they understood it would mean just both site and fire department.
Okay.
All right.
Barbara, this is Jim. Why, why is this treated any differently than the empty cars? Do we ever permit these to be on the lot, or did they just show up?
Actually, they just showed up. I think you're right.
Well, yeah, I, I would suggest the same treatment. I mean, this is on our main road into town, our main commercial road. And we're entitled, as the planning board, to be attentive to the appearance of lot. That's in the regs and in the ordinance. And, uh, storage trailers just suddenly arrive, take up residence, we don't have to allow them to be permanent. They've been there long enough. They should go.
Well, and I would point out that there's really no place else to put it on the site, that they would be shielded by a six-foot fence. So it's not as if they could put them on parking spaces, um, on the back of the main lot, Lot 30, and not have the butters looking at the top of them. So Jim has suggested that the, the containers will just be removed. Tim?
Well, we could, we have in the past permitted this, so we would be, make sure we state that the past practice came in with a special request for a storage container at a business site in, down in Penardville.
May I respond to that?
I, I just, I'm just trying to say, Jim, that we're not saying that they can never have one, they just have to follow the procedures to make a request to have one.
That's fair. Um, I, I just, in this, maybe in, to the Peter's comment, we take each site individually, and just because we let some be on one site, like the tire warehouse had one, because they needed one to, for their tires coming and going, that doesn't mean we have to allow them everywhere, and particularly when they show up. So, yes, Tim makes a good comment, but in any event, I don't think we're bound, just because we allowed a storage trailer on a different lot that we are compelled to permit it here, and particularly under the facts of this lot, I'm, I think it's inappropriate to allow it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next disputed item is in regards to traffic flow. Um, the applicant has represented that we're going to change the enter-only in regards to the, we're going to remove the enter-only in regards to the masked road, that will, uh, or, or notation in regards to the fact that the towing company will be using it as an exit. I think that was actually what was going to be decided. Um, any further discussion on that point? Joanne has recommended striping for traffic flow.
They're going to rearrange, they're going to remove the enter-only sign from our plan and no exit, and if there is an actual sign there now, they have to remove the sign.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Joanne, one of your issues is the best practice for an area with an impermeable surface to store severely damaged vehicles. Please show area on the plan.
That was DPW. They had requested that the area actually shown, and I, it's not currently on the plan.
Okay. I actually don't think I heard the applicant address that requested. Pat, in her letter?
I'm reading, I didn't see that. No, Pat did not address that, I can see.
Sarah, do you know what that would be?
Um, yeah, we have a solution to that.
All right, hold on. Mike, yes?
They'll be stored in the 612, uh, work yard.
So severely damaged vehicles will be stored in the existing garage and not outside?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we, can we, this Jim, may we define severely damaged?
I know, as soon as I started writing it, I'm like, that's not going to...
Better?
Um, I, I guess I would define it in accordance with the DES requirement.
Which is?
I have no idea. But it came from DES.
Well, I think we're entitled to put our own gloss on that, and if the issue is leaking fluids, is severely damaged or cars leaking fluids.
All right. The, uh, the applicant, the, the business applicant has got their hand up. Did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, do me go there, because I thought back there.
You can just say right there.
Name?
Oh, yeah, you haven't spoken yet, so come on. I need you to say your name again for the record.
I'm Carrie Jeffroy with Jorca Towing. Uh, I spent multiple phone calls, emails with DES, actually, with the spill department, with Zach Taylor and Laurel Pushy, and they believe that we are doing the best practice for severely damaged vehicles by making sure that they're covered with a plastic covering, which is disposable covering, to ensure that if it does rain, no water washes to the vehicles, and to ensure that cars that have damage have a pan underneath to catch anything that would fall out. Um, and she said that alone is above and beyond what they would ever expect. Um, they also said that if, for some reason, something was spilling, that we wouldn't have to contact them until it was 25 gallons. Um, that's what it becomes concerning for them. But I did, I had multiple conversations with them, as I said, with Zach Taylor, um, who talked about Mr. Paris and how he stored his vehicles there, and how that is above and beyond, and he also, um, gave you that recommendation for the hard pack as well.
Okay, thank you. So severely damaged vehicles being those for which there is a vehicle spill concern...
Up to 25 gallons.
No, I, I think DES doesn't get involved until 25 gallons. I think that doesn't mean there's not a concern.
There's a line in the sand somewhere there.
Will be covered or stored, and/or stored in the existing garage with appropriate...
Covered, so, and, and there's no leakage, so...
Right, and covered in any leakage spots protected.
But can't we just put on there, follows DES best practices?
No, because that's, it, it, because I think what the point is, is somebody got told you needed an impermeable surface, and this is on hard pack. So that's why they suggested, because he had previously said they weren't really using the existing garage except for storage, so that's why he said if there's an issue, he'll put it in the existing garage, which has an imper, I'm assuming has an impermeable bu, surface.
Concrete.
Of concrete, I would hope.
Floor.
All right, so those are the issues that Joanne has, had issued as being of some discussion. Tim?
I have one that's in the attorney's letter, number 12. DPW reported an existing water line discharges to the ground that must be disconnected and brought into compliance by connecting to the sewer system. This was sink inside the garage and has been removed. I'd like the applicant to explain that, if they would, please.
Mr. Paris?
There was a sink inside, and has been removed, and the plumbing that was going to it and leading outside the building is, is gone as well.
So why does, what DPW reporting an existing water line discharges to the ground? I don't understand what this, what this statement is, then.
Sarah, what, do you know what that is? What DPW found?
During a sewer inspection, Mike Giorgio found a line. We sent pictures. Joanne informed us that it has since been disconnected.
So there was a line simply discharging outside of the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
So that point, that's...
And there's pictures that I sent you this afternoon showing that, and Attorney Panchiato informed me that it has been removed.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it was clear.
So Tim just wanted clarification on that. Thank you, David.
That leads, that leads to the question, where does the water now discharge to?
There is no water there.
You have no water inside?
What they did was they ran a line from the water meter over to a sink, and then they had the sink draining outside the building. So now, there is, there is a water meter inside, so they have running water that they can put in the pail, but there is no sink, and there's no drainage of that, there's nothing...
There's no bathroom?
There's no bathroom.
Tim?
Well, I was going to ask the same question, Dave, was, we're talking about having a business with an office, and there's no bathroom in it.
Well, they, what I've done with previous tenants is I've had an agreement, a written agreement, where they could come in and use the bathroom in my facility.
Okay.
And that worked with rock solid.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions from board members on this? Okay.
Oh, boy.
Oh, my God. Um, I'm just sort of looking at all these conditions and the extra stuff we've done, and I'm pretty tired already. Tim?
So we probably should deal with the waivers request first, and then come up with a, a finite list of what's going to be acceptable for them to, provided the board votes to do this. What would be acceptable or not be acceptable, and what they have to, we have to wait for.
All right, let's, with the board's permission, I'm, I'm going to deal with the, the landscaping plan waiver at this point in time. This was submitted post the original application, given the fact the position was, we're dealing with the entire site, and the landscaping has changed. You have a copy of the 716 waiver request in front of you, and the applicant has five points that they have represented. Our representation, are representative of the fact that this waiver will not affect the purpose and intent of our regulations, and application of them would cause practical difficulty. Does anybody want to make a motion on the waiver in regards to the landscaping plan? Well, I'll make a...
I'll make a motion on the land, on the waiver for the landscaping.
Peter, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I, I don't like waiving it, but the reality is, we have this site, and there really isn't any place to put landscaping. I mean, that's just the practical reality.
And the applicant has stated that it meets the, the requirements of the 2010 plan, which is...
Right. And, and while the, the plantings may have been fairly recent, I am assuming that this is all going to be part of the new, constantly in compliance site.
Taken care of.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Barbara, to this Jim, to be clarified on, are they, is the applicant required to restore the landscaping that was shown and has died? Or are we waiving any of the landscaping?
The landscaping is being represented as being the same in number, and the existing berm is in compliance with the plan. So...
If, if we're going to waive it, then I, and since this subtlety seems to have been lost in some people, I think we put a condition that the landscaping, the existing landscaping be maintained.
That was stated.
Because you seem to have the argument, "Well, it died, and I didn't have to do anything further." No, you have to maintain it.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that...
I'll, I'll amend my mo, oh, Peter had the motion, not me.
Peter had the motion. Peter, you...
Yeah, I'll amend, I'll, I'll amend the motion to include that.
I'll second the amendment.
The current landscaping needs to be maintained.
Okay. So that's the motion in regards to the waiver request, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to call for the vote. David, you'll be vote, Karen, are you back, or are you still gone?
She's gone.
Karen is gone. David, you'll be voting. I'm going to call for the roll. Tim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yeah.
Gail?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, the waivers...
David?
Pardon me?
Did you call on David?
Yes, she did.
Yes, David voted yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, so the waiver has been requested. The planning director has given us a recommendation with 20 conditions. I believe that the lighting plan has been submitted, the first one, the lighting plan has been submitted, and the note 22 is going to be changed to be affirmative without condition for review. The applicant has indicated their agreement to that. Condition number two, the waiver, has been granted. Number three was addressed on the plan. Number four is a standing practice. Number five is a standing practice. Six, standing practice. Seven, D, we have made a condition that severely damaged vehicles will be stored either in the existing garage or on paved areas of the site covered with appropriate fluid. Containment measures. Eight, um, is a standard condition in regards to this kind of an operation. Nine is the four inches of hard pack.
With the word compacted before head.
Installed and compacted. Ten is, is in regards to issues or nuisance. The applicant is online that the site plan will be revoked. There will be no storage of vehicles or equipment in the 25 or 40-foot section of lot 32. 12, the shed and the existing garage will be used for office and storage only.
So that covers putting the severely damaged vehicles in the 612?
And may include the severely damaged vehicle, because I don't think that's what we were originally thinking. Thirteen, fence. Replace or repair? I'm gonna, I'm gonna start...
Barbara, I think some of us, I think, agree to the concept of repair with those standards that you articulated, that it's structurally sound, it's perpendicular to the ground, and it maintains an opaque barrier or continuous barrier.
And compliance with that condition is going to be determined by who?
The owner has, the, the towing contractor has stated for the record that his insurance, and insurance company will be responsible for maintaining the fence so long as he's a tenant on that site, if I heard correctly.
I don't care about that. The owner, as far as I'm concerned, is responsible for it and can work it out with his tenant. Jim?
Given the history of this, and whether we have a way of enforcing it, we want, we know our enforcement is not very good. It should be better. I would like the owner, given this problem, to certify annually to the planning department that the fence is in compliance, in the form of a letter, or at least that will force it to be brought to our attention annually, because otherwise, I just, it's gonna be enforced.
Okay, I would, I would like to, as to condition number 13, where I think we've just added some conditions, also say, the letter of compliance by the owner will be supplied on or before October, and I want to pick a date, that, so that the work has been completed this year.
Well, completion this year and maintenance here and after.
No, I understand that, but I also, I don't want this to be, I don't want it, for a letter in a year.
And that's fine, I agree.
Okay, so...
I'd make it October 1, because once you start getting into the fall, you know, they're gonna come in and say, well, winter can't do it, so...
Okay, October 1.
That's only eight or nine weeks.
Here we go. That's what they said, eight or nine weeks. Landscaping maintained on the site at all time, final inspection. The two storage trailers to be removed is my sense.
Can we go back to 15?
Yep.
Final inspection approval of the site. Are we gonna ask the surveyor of record to provide us with an as-built on the site, as we have other projects in the past, or are we gonna...
Barbara, this Jim, I'm not sure that anything's changing, other than, I mean, what we're dealing with, I'm not site improvements, but rather just compliance.
Okay, just want to make sure we...
I don't know how, Mike, as I've complimented, is a man of many powers, but I have a surveyor certified to a fence, it's really not, not what he does.
Okay.
The conditions of approval will be required to be listed on the plan, as well as any changes that were discussed tonight will, will need to be changed on the final plan set.
But, but Tim's going to ask him about the certification. Who does it? I, I just...
It's not, I don't...
It's a visual inspection by somebody.
Well, it's DPW and the planning director, Jim, so we leave it up to the public works and the planning director to certify the site for us then.
Well...
All right.
I don't like the word certify. We don't, we don't, that's a legal liability.
It's not in there. It's, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm taking condition number 15 as presented.
Number 15 doesn't say certified, it just says...
I know, that's why I said, I'm taking as presented. Number 16?
Bonzo.
Well, it's late, folks, and we got two other applications. Two storage trailers, remove.
They need to be removed. They've not been placed there with, in accordance with any approved site plan.
Does anybody on, present in the room or online from the planning board have, think that there should be a condition for the storage trailers in any form or number to remain? I'm seeing no one speak up or raise their hand. The applicant has agreed to show all groundwater monitoring wells on the site. Layout and signage for handicap parking, and I'm assuming that, that what we're talking about here now is the applicant wants to move the handicap spot from its current location as marked, and probably delete a spot in its entirety there, or leave that as a parking spot?
Leave that as a parking space.
Leave that as a parking space, so there will be a total of three spots remaining, because the existing three spaces in front of the 2,900 square foot building will become two, one handicap and one regular. No landscaping on the town's right-of-way. The sink, we're getting a representation that's been done, and we're assuming that will be verified.
And I have two, two more.
Okay.
The exit/enter sign should, the enter sign should be changed to enter/exit on Mass Road, and you still have to make a decision on the snow storage.
No, we don't. Snow storage, I think we've decided is to be removed. Is being removed.
No.
Okay.
Oh, no, and, no, 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 no. It's on the paved, it's on the paved. I came up with that solution. I would have remembered eventually.
Got a lot of no's there.
Barbara, I have two others.
Okay.
I have them, that the, Mr. Yorke has represented to us two things. One, that I recall, one is the backup alarms will be discontinued, or disconnected, that not operating on the site. And second, that, and he said tonight, there'll be no repo vehicles, possessed vehicles on the site. I'd like that incorporated as a condition.
I, I frankly think that the backup lights, the backup noises at all, at all times, there will be no backup lights, and the applicant is saying...
I didn't say just tonight, I hope, yeah, at all times.
Okay. Okay. No repo vehicles.
Can I ask a question on the backup alarm, even, even during the day?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the condition, even during the day, according to Jim. None at all.
Well, no, my question is, my question is, what's somebody like OSHA gonna say about that, that requires backup alarm? Can we supersede that rule?
I, I would think...
I think if the applicant finds that he can't do it, he can come back in and ask for it to be amended, but I don't, he's offered, we were concerned initially at night, I think we've expanded our concern. If you can disconnect them at night, you certainly could connect them, disconnect them during the day. That's what the applicant offered.
During the night, you're usually just the one guy, but during the day, there could be other people working on the lot. I disagree with that, making them disconnect them during the day. That's a safety hazard, and it's an OSHA requirement that backup alarms be on, so. I can understand the nighttime, but during the day, I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay, Tim?
So I concur with Peter. A backup alarm on a truck is a state of New Hampshire safety requirement inspection item. You can take your chances turning them off at night to respect the neighborhood, but during the daytime, I don't think we should require that, because it's a violation of the state law on the inspection site.
I thought the issue with backup was outside of the regular operating hours of 8:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday.
That was my understanding, Barbara.
Sunday out of the regular operating hours, and the...
I amend my motion to, if I made one, to the outside of the regular operating hours.
Okay. All right, does anybody just, does it...
That's what I, that's Peter and Tim.
So we, so the backup, there'll be no backup lights, I mean, beepers outside of the regular operating hours?
As stated in number 12.
And, and regardless of that, noise is a subject of a nuisance, so if there are 40 vehicles being dropped off every day, then that is probably gonna become a nuisance, and we're gonna have to deal with it. So it's, it doesn't exempt it from being part of what may or may not become a nuisance, just because it's allowed. Other conditions, anybody? Okay, all right, we've gone through... That's about how I feel. So we've gone through a number of conditions. We have modified them, and we have added two. Is, does anybody have a motion?
I move that we approve, subject to all the conditions we just listed, and I'm gonna, I say, we waive the reading, the rereading of them.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Peter has seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a roll vote. Tim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, the site plan is approved, subject to those conditions. And I want to thank the Butters for all their information and work on this. The next item on our agenda tonight is another item of old business. It's map five, lot 49-1, completeness review, subdivision review hearing for proposal to subdivide the property into two lots. The property is located on Mass Road in New Hampshire Route 114. The applicant is Easy Express Car Wash, and the property is owned by Bear's Financial Corporation. It's zone, commercial industrial flex zone, was continued. Patty, you want to wipe down the table, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
It was continued from the June 25 meeting. This is actually, and we actually sort of have two related applications before us tonight. The first, what we're doing now is a subdivision, and the second is a site plan. Our information in our packet begins at page 23. Joanne, you want to take us through this?
Yes, so this, there's two applications. Can you hear me? I just had to switch phones.
Yes.
Okay. There are two applications for this property. The first one is the subdivision, which is subdividing this land into two lots, and they would be a commercial industrial flex zone block. And the second application would be the site plan for a car wash on one of the lots. This land is a little bit unusual.
All right, Joanne, before we begin actually talking about the application, I have a question. Did we accept this already or not?
No.
We have not. It was just...
It hasn't really been before the board yet.
All right, is this application complete?
Yes, it's complete with no regional impact.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept this application as complete and ready. Are there any waivers, Joanne?
No.
Not, well, we're doing the, right now, we're doing the subdivision.
We're doing the site.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, this application is complete and ready for review with no regional impact.
Is there...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm gonna call for the roll. Tim?
Yes.
David? Is it accepted?
Would I be appropriate to have Gail vote on this?
You're both voting. I mean, if you want to abstain from voting because of the rail trail...
You're gonna have to rise.
It's still a quorum.
All right, so you're gonna, we're gonna pass on you for this. All right, Peter?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is it appropriate for David to stay at the table, or sit in the, in the audience like we normally would have, someone who's gonna be speaking?
Are you gonna speak on this application?
Yes.
On the subdivision?
No, well...
Why don't you just go sit? It's too late. I can't deal with the nuances of this. Let's just take care of that.
Very direct.
All right, okay. All right, now, Joanne.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention that this property is a little bit unusual, because although it appears that it's fronting on Mass Road, there's actually town property, which is part of the rail trail that abuts the road. So what they're proposing to do is to come in with a private road that would access both parcels with a 50-foot right-of-way, and Nick could explain the details on that, but that's been reviewed by staff, and everyone is comfortable with the way it's being proposed. A special exception was approved by the ZBA to allow for a car wash, but we can talk about that for the next hearing.
Okay. So as to this, um...
This is located within the jurisdiction of New Hampshire DOT driveway permits, so
that you're recommending documentation needed from DOT in regards to the issues of access and the private road.
Yes, the only change that I would recommend is on page 26, under number 16, where it's safe, a private maintenance agreement between the two lots will be required and shall be approved by the board. That should be changed to read, DPW staff, or just staff in general.
All right, did the board have any questions in regards to this subdivision, before I open it up to the applicant? I'm, Tim?
Barbara, may I just speak to that last point?
Yep.
The private maintenance agreement approved by staff, presumably with the approval of the town lawyer, that didn't work last time, and I guess I'd like us to see what it is that these look like. That didn't work last time, and I guess I'd like us to see what it is that these look like.
Okay.
Okay, I have not received a copy yet, otherwise I would have sent it over, but I'm sure Nick could speak to that.
I want to see it.
I mean, there was an issue with that last review that Jim brought to the board, which was something that we hadn't seen and something that he caught that the lawyer did not. So I think it's a valid concern, but let's deal with that as we proceed.
They had changed our drainage maintenance agreement, the one, the Mast Road crossings. They had changed, proposed changes to it.
I know, and our lawyer approved them, and then we said no, so that's Jim's point.
We have a standard one, too, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Then I'd like to see the standard one.
Okay.
But we don't have the standard one with this because the only purpose of this private maintenance agreement is to have in writing whose responsible between the two parties once the second lot sells, so that we don't run into the same situation we did in the area of the Tower Lane project, where really we didn't know who was doing what. This is just to cover, it has nothing to do with the town, it's between the two private parties, but we just wanted to make sure there's something in writing stating-
But I guess, parties to an agreement, and we won't be a party to this or free to amend it at any time, so I'm not sure, quite sure how that buys us anything. Maybe Jim has a different take on it.
Having been burned once, although we caught it, I don't want to do that again. I want to see these.
He wants to see it. Okay, all right. Any other comments from board members before we turn the mic over to the applicant? Tim?
So this proposal tonight, this first application is strictly to subdivide the property into two lots, and the discussion of any of this roadway or this driveway is not granted as a part of the subdivision. This is a different part of the subdivision.
No, I think Joanne is saying it's part of the subdivision.
This project is divided into two parts. The first part is the subdivision, which includes the roadway, and the second is the site plan for the development of a car wash.
Okay, so my question would be that, are we adequately providing for the other 11-point something acres without a town road being constructed, with nothing more than a driveway being put in there? I don't feel-
It's actually a private road, it's being built to town standards with a 50-foot right-of-way, and that's why it's part of the subdivision, because in order to subdivide, they have to have proper road frontage. So it's connected to the subdivision itself and not the site plan.
Barbara, this is Jim.
I wasn't quite done, Jim, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
I don't think that we are in the business of accepting private roads anymore. We've been burned on private roads in the past. I've sat here and listened to it, I know what happened down the road, and the whole fact that we are looking at a miniature version of a road with a hammerhead, without even a circle to accommodate turning vehicles, a tractor-trailer cannot turn around in this hammerhead as it's constructed right now, and I feel that this is a grossly inadequate road to service, not just the 1.3 acres for the car wash, but the other 11-point something acres for the future development of that land, and certainly it's not going to be a single lot. It's going to be multiple lots, they're going to be back in here for more subdivision. Thank you, Jim.
Jim?
I'm sorry. But the question is, do these lots not have frontage on a class-five road currently?
No, this site had previously had a residential home on it years and years ago. There was a fire, and there was a residential driveway into that site.
So, but does it, it doesn't currently comply with zoning, right?
Correct.
Well, it will, as part of this subdivision, they've included 50 feet for each lot.
It's a private road, so it does not have frontage on a class-six road. Correct?
It has, no, it does not have frontage. There's an easement-
It does not currently comply with zoning.
It does not, but once the subdivision is approved, it will have a road, a private road, built to town standards.
Don't the saltmen then have to enter into a private road agreement in order to allow this?
Um, I don't know. You'd have to-
I'm telling you, they do.
I mean, it was, it's been reviewed by DPW and no one had-
No, it's statutory.
Okay.
It doesn't have class-
All right, okay. Okay.
I think, I'm going to suggest that we review our acceptance, and we can accept it for discussion purposes without waiving any non-compliance zoning or the statutory requirement of frontage on a class, if it's a class-five or better road, until they've come through with how they're going to meet those requirements.
Okay. Jim has suggested that we change the vote on our acceptance, given the status of the frontage.
We can make this happen, or make it happen correctly, and thus far, I don't think it is.
Okay, this, I have to tell you, I don't know. I was aware that there was an issue with the frontage on this lot, and maybe I just knew it from before. And I'm not sure whether maybe Joanne's write-up was not clear about that, but I thought when she wrote that both lots will have required frontage on a private new road crossing rail trail property owned by the town of Goffstown, we were on notice of this class-five road frontage issue.
RSA 67441, small d in parentheses, or Roman number one, small d in parentheses.
Okay, Gail, do you have your-
On a private road, what's required? And the town can approve it, but it's the local governing body, which is the Board of Selectmen.
All right. Jim, I understand your position, but I think that if we find that the application is incomplete, we can deny it or we can continue it. I don't know that I want to go-
We can continue with it, but I just don't want to waive that, which we did by our acceptance. We can continue, but make it conditioned upon either of those, but as of now, we've essentially waived it by our acceptance.
All right, I don't know that we have. Okay. I'm going to go with your opinion on that, because you know much more about the book with the rules in it than I do.
Can we have a motion to rescind the acceptance?
I have to amend the previously approved acceptance to not waive any requirements for either zoning or RSA 67441 for frontage on a class-five road.
I'll second Jim's motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a roll. Tim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
All right. Nick, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you.
Identify yourself, please.
First, let me start with hello. My name is Nick Goland. I'm a licensed engineer and senior project manager with TF Moran. Happy to be here tonight on behalf of my client, Mr. Andrew Ezekiel, for what is a proposed two-lot subdivision and the proposal for an Easy Express car wash. We spoke a little bit relative to what the property is. This is tax map five, lot 49-1. It is zone, commercial industrial flex zone, that being 186 Mast Road, the physical address. It is comprised of approximately 13.2 acres. I'm going to go back in time a little bit to March, when this application was brought before the board in a conceptual format, where there was the opportunity to review what the project's intent was, some subdivision components. It was my understanding at that time that there were no specific issues, which has brought us to, if we fast forward to today, we've had the opportunity to review this project, both the subdivision as well as the site plan on multiple levels with DPW, as well as staff via Joanne. We've gotten a considerable amount of insightful comments that I think have created what is a very nice project and something that we can all be very proud of. As was mentioned in the opening, we have two items for review, that being the two-lot subdivision, where we are proposing to subdivide to create an 11.89 acre lot and a 1.33 acre lot. The 1.33 acre is the waiver, or excuse me, is the land that is proposed for the development. Before I go further, I think it would be important to touch on a few of the comments made by planning board members thus far. Relative to a private maintenance agreement, my understanding that there aren't really any good examples in town currently of one, because it hasn't been something that's typically been required. The thought process is, this should start to be enacted. So we are starting and creating a document with guidance of DPW. If there is a desire for the planning board to review that final agreement before it's enacted, I don't believe the applicant has any issues with that. We'd like to see the opportunity for the project to move forward, so if there's a chance for that to be a condition subsequent, it would certainly be appreciated to allow the project to move forward. In concerns of the private road being inadequate, at face value, to say you have nearly 12 acres left, and, you know, is this road going to be adequate for that use? I could see where there's a potential concern. If I may, I'm going to draw your attention to sheet S3. This is the partial topographic subdivision plan. On that sheet, it will show you the proposed lot, that being lot 54911, comprised of 1.3278 acres, we'll be precise. Directly to the west of it, you can see the remaining lot area as well as a portion to the south. The portions that which you are looking at, which is plus or minus two acres, is the remaining developable land on this lot. You can see there is significant topography that you encounter at the central portion of this lot. There's also a nearly 3,000 square foot wetland with ledge on either side of it. As you continue to progress yourself south, although not shown on that sheet, if you turn to sheet S2, you'll notice that just beyond the viewport, you'll notice-
X2?
S2, excuse me, which is the sheet that's prior to that. You'll see that's the overall plan. Now, if we kind of draw some parallels here, we can see where that wetland is on sheet S3, and we can then see where it is on sheet S2.
You're saying F?
S. S is in Sam.
I got all Cs.
You're looking at the site plan, sir, versus the subdivision.
Where's that?
You would have received two packages, sir.
Here's, I look at the little one, and take this one.
I don't have a subdivision plan.
Here, take this one. I look at the little one.
Thank you.
I will work the board here as well.
S3.
So that way I can point out some of these prominent features as we have this discussion. Again, at face value, I don't disagree, though the concern that, are we creating a condition where there is going to be an abundance of future subdivision? There's no value in it. I don't think it would even meet the lot requirements. You can see where that line, this is certainly developable area, and you have a portion behind that lot which is potentially developable. Look at the closest of those contours, those contour intervals. Those are three-to-one slopes. They go to two-to-one slopes and even one-to-one slopes in some places. The dark hatched areas represent ledge. The areas, the area directly in between those ledge outcroppings is a wetland. So if we look to see, okay, this is that wetland location, which continues just about to this dashed line. When we look on that next sheet, lo and behold, we have an ever-source easement in which we cannot build any buildings. Topography continues to be tremendously steep through that area. The area that which is developable for this applicant is the area that's directly adjacent to what we're developing, which is, again, another approximately two acres. So when we think about, well, what can we develop within two acres? It's going to be something very similar to what you're looking at here, which is in part why we've subdivided the lots in ways we have. We've used the area that's required for the proposed car wash, a little bit of extra, make sure we have room for our drainage and the other components. And then to the west, you have that remaining developable area, which, again, is almost equal in size when we look at what that proposed lot is. So again, at face value, oh, there's 11.89 acres left, we're going to have a bunch of houses back there. It's commercial industrial flex, and we're going to have multiple businesses. We're not. You can't physically build them. It wouldn't be financially economical to remove all that ledge, to try and flatten those steepened slopes, to fill that wetland. There isn't the availability to develop in that portion. So relative to the concerns of the attic fee of the road, I think it's important to look at that aspect of this lot. The second component relative to accessibility, we have designed that hammerhead to accommodate emergency vehicles, but the reality is, we're not here to just subdivide the lots and build a hammerhead. We have to look at the Easy Express car wash plans, which shows the ability for our oversized vehicles to navigate not only through that hammerhead, but also to navigate through the site as a whole. And it's a requirement that those emergency services have the ability to navigate through our site. We've shown on our plans that we have that ability. Those are included as supplements to your plan set. Patty aptly pointed out, we need to include it in the formal plan set. It needs to be on the index of sheets. So we will provide that information. To the third point, relative to frontage, I know better than to argue with an attorney, especially in a public forum, so I'm not going to endeavor. I would only note that if approved on a plat, by the planning board, a road giving access, be an easement, would make this an acceptable lot with acceptable frontage. I won't go beyond that, because I don't know all of the logistics, but I only know through other projects that which I've developed, where we have extended private roads and/or easements to the road that provides our frontage, that that, once approved by the planning board, that's the big caveat, once approved by the planning board, that makes it a legal lot with frontage. So I want to make sure that we touched on those three items, because they're obviously very important, and you guys nailed them right off the bat. Those are things that we needed to discuss. Relative to the other components of the subdivision, I'll be honest, there's not a lot to talk about. Everything really ties to the development project. What we have done via the subdivision is essentially all of the sediment erosion controls, the stormwater management features that will be constructed for this site, are shown on the subdivision plan. And that's very purposeful. We don't want to just show that we're, okay, we're just going to build in this hammerhead, and, all right, if things don't work out, well, we're not going to move forward with the drainage components. This is providing that failsafe, and it was a great recommendation by your DPW. They said, well, if you're going to go ahead and do a subdivision with this hammerhead, well, we want to make sure that you're going to install the drainage components as well. So instead of just showing the lot areas and a driveway, we are committing to building all of these drainage improvements as well. So again, I think that's an important aspect when we're evaluating what is really just a two-lot subdivision. No, there's a couple of waivers that are associated with the subdivision itself, two of which directly deal with a component that I've already discussed, which is, we haven't identified on these plans. It's a partial waiver for topography, as well as the location of special features for the southerly portion of the lot. It's an incredibly steep slope. It's dangerous even to get our surveyors back there for that purpose. So it's a typical request that we've had in the past, that we don't survey those areas that which are undeveloped. We would appreciate the opportunity that, to be acted on. We feel like it's consistent with previous requests of this board, and overall, that it is consistent with your ordinance. The third waiver that's associated really with this commercial subdivision is a component of the drainage. It's a tough site to figure out how to make everything work, when you've got the rail trail right between us and Mast Road. But we were able to come up with some creative solutions. They've been reviewed by DPW, and our understanding is they find it to be acceptable that we will have some surcharge in a culvert that will drain underneath the proposed private road. Now, what we've incorporated is a system, basically of belt and suspenders, where we have provided four bays. We've tried, we've installed filtration basins, and then provided catch basins, unleaching catch basins, with overflows that ultimately would drain from the north side of the site, being that stormwater really drains from some south to north here. When we look at the grading and drainage of this, we see how this filtration basin is filled by a four bay on both the north and south sides. And on that north end, we have a catch basin overflow. That way, so that if this ever overtops, it's not going to overtop into the development, it's not going to overtop into our roadway. It's going to have the opportunity to overflow in the adjacent filtration basin, which ultimately discharges adjacent to the right-of-way and then drains to a pipe adjacent to the rail trail. So the areas that I was mentioning before, this is another one of our four bays located here and here. We've installed some leaching catch basins, which, again, promote that opportunity for recharge. And you'll notice also on this catch basin, it has an overflow again to our four bay. So by interlinking these various components of the stormwater management, it absolves also those concerns that, okay, when we have that freak storm where we've got snow on the ground, we may have a frozen ground, we end up with rain, where does that stormwater go? And credit to your DPW for really taking the time to sit down with us and work through those options to come up with the best solution. those options to come up with the best solution.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Questions from board members? Tim?
So, um, I'm reading the application for final subdivision plan review, and there are no waivers listed on the application.
Yeah, I, I was going to bring that up. There, this was a little confusing because you did, the report was done listing out the requirement for the waivers, but I did not have any waivers in my packet.
It was attached to the whole packet.
Original packet?
What I mailed you had all, had, had one that lists partial waiver attached to it, and you, what I mailed you in the mail, I took everything and I attached it to his application.
I listed waivers for the site plan itself, that's where you'll find them.
And the, the application for the subdivision is subdivision and site plan. They did it together on that one application.
The intent being that all that information was in one place for you at one time.
But the problem is, we have to vote and deal with them separately, so I'm not sure I would have agreed with staff.
So where, where am I looking for those, 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 um?
While you go through it, and then, all right, after, you want me to count the pages and I'll tell you?
I got the application to development review, is that where I'm looking in this packet?
Yeah, that's, that's their application, they submitted as part of their application.
If it's of any assistance, I have it in front of me and be happy to read it into the record.
So you have?
You can read it after I can find it.
You have appendix C, section five D, um-
See that? Yep.
Then they have the ones that say partial, and then they have, wait a minute, are they on the same one? Oh, then you have the section three C, three C two-three.
C, three C seventeen, three C two-three.
I have to admit, I missed that when I looked at this.
Yeah, that's the next page after the-
Because it wasn't on the staff report, because this, the way it was put together-
She put it under, um-
The subdivision.
The subdivision. And then the partial one, because when we went through this, because all this came in, like, a lot of this came in like a couple months ago, and we went through asking, okay, so what are you asking for? And the two wa- the waivers that she's listed, and then the partial one was something he's talking about, it wasn't really a waiver waiver.
So in Joanne's packet, the waivers are listed on page twenty-eight, though it looks like it's missing one.
The, the partial one, she didn't write when she went over it with Nick, because they're partial, which he's kind of explaining. There's like a letter, it's dated, it's, I stamped it, received May fourteenth, twenty twenty, and that goes with the subdivision, this is partial waiver.
Do you want to see it? No, I don't, because I'm getting very confused as to why these were not separated so that I'm just dealing with the subdivision. In regards to the subdivision, the waivers requested, and I'm going to go to Nick. Nick, R.
The relative of the subdivision, section three C seventeen, subdivision plan contents for topographic map.
Yeah.
This is a partial waiver request.
Yeah.
Development regulation, section three C twenty-three, subdivision plan contents, location of special features, wetlands, et cetera, again, a partial waiver request.
Okay.
Um, appendix C, section five D, uh, this is a waiver request to permit a surcharge in a drainage culvert during the design year storm.
Okay.
Those are the three components of waivers for the subdivision.
So three of the four, the three of the four for the subdivision. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm sorry, I've got a list with two, and there's four in the packet. Okay.
So relative to the application, um, I guess the only other thing I mentioned, there's a DOT permit for the curb cut, obviously, that's associated with this. We received some finer, final minor comments from DOT, which we'll be addressing. So if the board chose to act on this application, the DOT permit would obviously be a condition of approval.
Okay. All right, um, so, board members, everything other than the road approval, the RSA six seventy-four issues, comments. Anybody see, any, let's go through the waivers then. Um, why don't we deal with the memo dated May fourteenth in your packet in regards to development regs, three C seventeen and three C twenty-three, topo and wetlands, partial waivers requested. Nick, you want to address why we meet the standard on those?
Certainly. Under this, so I'll start with section three C seventeen, and this is more or less a reiteration of what I had said previously, but under this section, a topographic map must be provided based on datum plane established by the Town of Gosp Town GPS control points or its allocations approved by the planning board at contour interval of two feet where the slope is twenty percent or less, and a contour interval of five feet where the slope of the land is greater than twenty percent. We have provided topographic mapping based on the town's datum within the developable northern portions of the property. Those were the areas that I had expressed to on the map. The provided mapping includes enough coverage to ensure there's sufficient buildable area to meet the town's minimum requirements. The parent parcel is in excess of ten acres in area, as such, the cost to the applicant to perform the additional topographic mapping over the entire parcel is not as feasible provided the applicant's intent to develop this lot. As such, a partial waiver to this section is requested.
And Nick, is your position that this partial waiver is needed because application would cause practical difficulty and it will not affect the purpose and intent of the development regs?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, just to move this along, board members have any questions on the waiver request for the topo? Nick, if you could move on to the one dealing with the wetlands.
Certainly. Uh, under this section, the plan must provide the location of special features, natural and made affecting the subdivision or giving it character such as bodies of water, streams and watercourses, swamps and marshes, wetlands, wooded areas, houses, barns, and other significant features. Some motorola request for topographic mapping above. We have provided the location of special features within the developable northern portions of the property, and even, I can even expand on that, that we've also gone further south so that we could define where it begins to be undevelopable. To meet the town's minimum requirements, the parcel again is in excess of ten acres in area, and as such, the cost to the client to perform the additional resource mapping over the entire parcel is not feasible provided the applicant's intent, as such, just a partial waiver of this section is requested.
And Nick, is it your representation that the partial waiver is appropriate because of the practical difficulty and expense of doing it, and that it doesn't affect the intent or purpose of the regs?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Tim?
So, I think Jim is already thinking this. The partial waivers for, that are being requested in, for the first two, apply only to the development of the parcel that is in question here for the car wash, that doesn't grant them the permanent right to this waiver for future development of those parcels. Jim, is that worded in similar fashion to what you would be thinking?
Say, say that again, Tim, I'm sorry.
I'm not, if we grant the, if these waivers get granted, it's for the development of the car wash parcel, they're not permanent waivers for that parcel for the future.
Well, if we grant it for the subdivision, we've created a lot, and it's, it's, it's just separate proceedings. You're creating a subdivision, two separate lots, and then we're integrating a site plan for the car wash. So if we grant these waivers, it's for the lot and whatever, we could grant this subdivision, they could withdraw the site plan application and commit with some other use for those lots.
And then they wouldn't, and then the waiver would, would be applicable to that lot for any future development?
No.
Would now, if, if we conditioned it on, you know, we tie the two together somehow, but we have to do that.
I'm just bringing that up.
That's why I've included the waivers on the site plan report and not the subdivision.
But in order to create the lot, do we have to grant the waiver?
Yes.
No, because these have to, these waivers have to do with the development of the lot itself.
No, the waivers are part of the development regs for the subdivision, they're needed for the subdivision.
Okay, then, then, then that's fine.
Nick.
Offer clarification to the board if I may?
But answering Tim's question, we create two lots that can be used for any permitted use.
The waivers that which we are requesting are for the subdivision only. Should the applicant choose to come back and develop that land, those regulations would also have to be waived within the site plan regulations, is my understanding, because you would not be showing the topographical features within that area. So either A, he would have to survey it at that time, or B, he would be requesting a similar waiver as part of his site plan application at that time. So you, you have another bite at the apple down the road if you really want to see some very sharp cliffs.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Waiver request, appendix C, section five D, in regards to the stormwater management design.
I'll, I'll read this one in totality. Uh, on behalf of our client EZ Car Wash, we respectfully request a waiver from the Town of the Gosp Town Development Regulations, appendix C, section five D, to permit a surcharge in a drainage culvert during the design year storm. The proposed stormwater management design incorporates a series of filtration basins with sediment four bays to capture, attenuate, and treat runoff for the proposed development. Due to the configuration of the existing access and utility easements and the requirements to the Town of Gosp Town standard road construction, stormwater collected along the western portion of the roadway will be pre-treated in a sediment four bay prior to entering one of two leaching catch basins, enabling the pretreated stormwater to infiltrate into the subsurface materials. A twelve-inch HDPE pipe has been designed under the proposed roadway as a secondary means of stormwater leaving four bay number two. Should stormwater enter the four bay at a rate faster than the exfiltration leaving the catch basins, the structure will surcharge the connecting pipe and discharge into four bay one. This four bay and connecting pipe are designed as an extension of the filtration system on the opposite side of the roadway, and the proposed design has been reviewed by the Department of Public Works, and it is our understanding that they are in agreeance, this is an appropriate request. Now, we feel this waiver request is appropriate and consistent with the expectations of the planning board, and that the subdivision plan upholds the spirit and intent of the development regulations, and public convenience and welfare will not be adversely affected. As such, we respectfully request a waiver from this subsection.
Any questions on this waiver request? I don't see any.
Barbara, this is Jim, I, isn't that a question that we should put to Sarah to comment on?
Right, yeah. No, I, I'm try, just trying to get through the presentation, I'm assuming that Sarah is going to, I'm going to have Sarah chime in, I think, before we go to public comment on this application, I'm trying to get the board members all on the same page, Sarah has already reviewed this.
It, it-
Sarah, why don't, Sarah?
Yes.
Um, you've heard Nick request various waivers in conjunction with this subdivision, have you had an opportunity to look at any of them?
Yes, and Eric and I had a separate meeting with Nick to go over the drainage, and we, we've, I feel like we've talked about it extensively, we understand what they're trying to do, and we feel like, given the site and their design is, is good, we feel comfortable with it. So we felt comfortable with, um, recommending that that waiver get approved.
Thank you. Okay, um, the applicant has-
I have a, I have a question, Barbara, and for Sarah, is, does this, that, does this system that Nick has suggested require any special maintenance, so that we'd need to impose conditions on our approval to ensure that happens?
Nick?
I have recommended, um, a drainage maintenance agreement, and Nick had already sent me a draft, I know he's working on it, um, but I know they didn't have any problem with doing a drainage maintenance agreement, but no, their system is very basic, um, you shouldn't really need any specialized equipment to clean out the culverts or the four bays or the ponds.
Well, I would make, uh, if we're going to waive it, I would make the motion to waive subject to an acceptable maintenance agreement, so we can make sure we pick that up.
Was that part of sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure. All right. Any other questions from board members before I open this up for public hearing?
I, I have a question, um, if I may, Barbara, on the road issue, I don't want to beat this, but you go back to the prior page of their application, and Eddie Gale can enlighten us, there's a notice of decision by the ZBA where the applicant requested a variance from frontage, one of the options they had. It doesn't, it looks like the ZBA did not grant that, instead they just granted a special exception. So I assume the waiver request was, was withdrawn, and they're relying on six seventy-four forty-one, but those are two separate requirements, zoning and six seventy-four forty-one are overlapping but separate, so I, I still have a question. Maybe answerable, but I, I, but what the ZBA did did not answer that question.
Perhaps I can try and assist. That variance was withdrawn and with purpose. It was determined that in lieu of applying for a variance, bringing in a private road, which would be our street giving access to a class five road or better, was a more appropriate solution than, than a variance. So assuming that the planning board determines to approve the subdivision by showing that street giving access on a plot plan approved by the planning board, we have a viable subdivision.
I understand, I'll have to think about it.
Okay.
I, I only know this specifically because I dealt with it, um, on the Ritchie Brothers site at exit eleven in Huxit, where we proposed a subdivision, it was a town road, and in order to reach access to the back of the lot, um, we had to deal with providing an easement to that road, which would be our class five frontage, um, which is very similar to what we're talking about here with a private road with, with easements over it. That was reviewed by their town attorney, determined to be acceptable, um, so that's why I'm able to at least have that information available to you tonight.
I would know, the difference here is this lot in itself, parent lot doesn't have frontage, that's different than when you subdivide a lot that has frontage into lots where you have to break frontage to the back lot.
I'll yield to the chairman on this.
Well, no, I don't know, we don't have to beat it now, I'm going to, I'm going to think about it.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to open the public hearing at this point on the subdivision. Is there anybody online, Patty, who has called in on this?
Um, the applicant's online.
And?
Um, I, does the applicant want to say anything? I'm assuming not. Um, is there anybody else here who wants to speak as to the subdivision? David, come on up. Do you mind if Nick just stays there and you come on up?
Yeah, you can, here, I'll be there, here's my-
All of, I have five comments, I'm David Pierce.
Thank you.
Representing friends of the Gulfstown Rail Trail.
Okay.
Non, a nonprofit organization, and we've been charged, uh, our goal is to fund, design, and build the Gulfstown Rail Trail in cooperation with the Park Department and the Select Board. I have five specific comments, they all deal with the, um, the road design, and I think the board is discussing the road design as part of the subdivision? So, I mean, I can address these now, or I can come back for the site plan discussion.
I've got different opinions on what we're doing here, so, um, I think that the, the road is getting-
Since, all of the, all of the features I'm going to discuss are, are shown on the-
The subdivision.
The subdivision plan.
Right, so I think that we need to do-
So I'll, I'll bring them all to light now.
Okay.
Um, first of all, uh, I had a, an elevation plan for the Gulfstown Rail Trail, it was done maybe two years ago, and I was very pleased that the, the elevation of the, of the trail crossing on his proposed road was almost exactly the elevation that I had for the rail trail, so I'm, I'm pleased that-
That was not easy to do. I digress, sorry.
I'm pleased that the, that was a compatible design. Okay, uh, the plan shows a concrete apron with a tactile ADP, ADA pad embedded in concrete on the, uh, both edges of the concrete, of the curbing of the road. That design feature, a concrete pad with a tactile pad, is not used at any other road, private road crossing, and nor was it a requirement that the planning board approved for the development of the site at the Factory Street. So if what was acceptable at Factory Street was an asphalt apron extending for twenty feet, the width of the tra- the width of the trail, from the edge of the road, I'm, I would recommend that the concrete pad and the tactile ADA, tactile pad not be a requirement. I mean, I, if the board feels it's absolutely necessary, I'm, maybe you're setting a precedence for other sites that we have not done elsewhere, and it's completely opposite of what we've done at Factory Street. Now, in, in truthfulness, there are ADA tactile pads at the two crosswalks on Mass Road. That was, those intersections were built with federal money, crossing a state highway, and with, therefore had much more stringent oversight, and far beyond what the, the town has employed at all our other rail trail crossings. So, once again, I feel that the concrete pads and the ADA pads are not, not necessary.
No objection.
So paving, or nothing?
A, an asphalt apron, the width of the trail extending 20 feet-
From the edge of the road.
Is the same thing that was, the board had approved for Factory Street.
Okay.
Second item, the installation of a, a set of three bollards on either side of this road. In the design of the rail trail, we have not employed, not used bollards where the trail is entirely visible from a public road. The bollards are only used to deter or prevent unauthorized cars, trucks, from accessing the trail and then reach other sections where they are not easily seen. So I recommend that the bollards be deleted from this design. I know that the Fire Department has made a comment to this plan regarding the keys to the center bollard, and the keys would be compatible with all the other bollards in town. But that, that, that comment from the Fire Department was only applicable to if the center bollard existed, they wanted the keys to be compatible. It was not a, a comment on the requirement of a bollard. I go back to my first point, we have not employed bollards in the design of the rail trail where the trail is entirely visible from a public road. My third comment, on all of the drawings, the scaled width of the rail trail, and then specifically on Sheet S14, which shows the curb cut for the rail trail, it says that the trail's eight feet wide. So, I'm sure you have S14 there, Nick?
Yeah, I do.
Can you point out the accessible curb ramp type D on the bottom?
Yep.
So that drawing indicates that the rail trail crossing on this new road is eight feet. The design of the Goffstown Rail Trail is 10 feet wide, and I recommend the board would change, have the plan changed to show that being 10 feet. And, you know, all the other drawings be appropriate, the dashed lines representing the trail would indicate 10 feet. My fourth concern, such as, if you could turn up-
Sure, I'll be your Vanna. I'll keep flipping sheets. I don't object to any of your requests, so this seems to be working out okay.
On S4.
Did I speak too soon?
There are three monumentations shown here, here, and there, that have been in, representing the boundary lines of the town's property for the rail trail. It's almost guaranteed that those boundary line monumentations are gonna be destroyed in the construction of the road and the drainage basins. I would like to see a condition that the monumentation be reinstalled once the construction has finished. Number five, you, on your Plan S6.
Grading in drainage. This is an updated plan, see what you may have originally been looking at, depending on how recent.
That plan doesn't show a six-foot-wide riprap spillway?
It does.
Right, okay, it does. I couldn't see it.
Concerned with the discharge into the right of way?
Yes. Nick pointed out a six-foot-wide spillway-
Right there.
That empties the over, if, we had real bad-
Very nice.
-storm, that, the water from that basin would empty onto the town's property. It would flow onto the rail trail. It would flow along the rail trail, and finally seeking a, a culvert-
That is right there.
It's on, and the culvert's on the opposite side of the rail trail. North side.
May I address that one for you as we go? Because we understood that, and it was a concern that we evaluated as part of our drainage design, such that during a hundred-year storm event, there is zero discharge from that basin. So it was acknowledged that, especially the smaller events that we see with regularity, how that rilling or rutting could be created across the rail trail. It's the last thing we wanna do. Having the opportunity to be out there, just evaluating the site as we're doing our drainage, looking at drainage paths, there's an abundance of people out there. Fantastic. I'd love to see that many people out there. The last thing we wanna do is hinder durability. So we've designed our drainage such that there is zero discharge, not just from that basin, from all of the basins during the hundred-year storm event.
So I'm, I'm gonna present a drawing to Nick, and I'll, it, my drawing I'm showing, the engineer shows that the, the rail trail would be built from an elevation of his future road to the elevation of a driveway that's abutting the property would be a smooth line, and it would be approximately a foot above the existing ground. Therefore, the flow coming out of that spillway, if, if it does amount to a flow, it would be, once again, barricaded by the height of the trail being a foot higher than it presently is. But then you're maintaining that we won't see-
So we acknowledge that as concern, and Sarah kinda mentioned it in the opening when we were talking about drainages. This is a really tough site to design, and you didn't, you wouldn't think it would be, but the presence of that rail trail, the presence of Mass Road, it created a lot of pull points that you typically wouldn't have. The fact that we had to hit a very certain elevation on our driveway at a certain, at a certain point in order to mirror what you guys had previously designed to be consistent with that. The acknowledgement that you guys are gonna be leveling this out to provide more of a flat route from point A to point B means anything that we would have potentially have as a discharge needs a hole. So just making sure it doesn't leave. So we've had the opportunity to oversize our drainage systems for that purpose.
Then I, I have no comment five, just the four that I've already presented.
Thank you. Okay, so that public comment was handled a little differently than normal in light of the hour, the lack of public, and the issues presented. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak in regards to this commercial subdivision request? I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Tim?
I'd like to make a point that Dave Pierce's last comment about the access to the culvert on Mass Road, it's been the applicant's statement that it's never gonna happen because they designed the-
Didn't say a hundred-year storm, you said.
Hundred-year storm.
Well-
Didn't say never. Hundred-year storm.
Hundred-year storm may, I think we've seen a hundred-year storm on Mother's Day, and we've seen subsequent storms, so I don't feel that not providing a channel of flow for that water that's not gonna destroy the rail trail is in our best interest. I don't know if the Rail Trail Committee feels that way, but I think the comments have merit, and-
Fear of a resolution, and we'll-
I think the comments have merit, and I think they should stay in the record.
I, okay. Any other board members on this point?
I have some public comment.
Sure, what, sure. I'm, I'm giving up all rules at this point.
If there is flow from this hundred-year storm or worse, that would damage the rail trail, there is an option of putting a, a 12-inch culvert under the rail trail, shown on the drawing that I just gave Tim, that would feed into the culvert on the north, the opposite side of the trail. This proposed 12-inch culvert to alleviate the overflooding doesn't necessarily have to be installed now. I think if we were to see a storm like that, and if whatever, if the damage were to occur, we already have a solution in hand, and, but it wouldn't affect a requirement on this developer.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing I was gonna mention, having the opportunity to just chat with the applicant, with Andy before the meeting, you know, he lived in Goffstown for 11 years. He relocated to New Boston. He's excited about coming back to town and being a part of this community. So working with the Friends of the Rail Trail to make sure that if there needs to be a culvert there sometime in the future, I'm not concerned about that. And if that's something that, David's expressed it as a concern, that there is a plan in place already on how to resolve it, it sounds like we already have a solution.
Okay. Other board members? I'll, I'll just say the requirement is either a hundred-year storm or not. I mean, if I've got a representation from the applicant that it is not gonna affect it, and I've got a foot elevation, and I, for many reasons, am very familiar with the hundred-year storm of Mother's Day, you know, I don't know that we can require anything else at this time, in my opinion. Other board members? All right, we come back to this road issue. We sort of have these two applications on our agenda tonight that are wrapped together. But in the first instance, we have a commercial subdivision in regards to this application that has a road issue, of which we've discussed a couple of different ways, and relates to Condition 16. So I guess I wanna hear the board's druthers. Having said that, I understand that there is a comment, the public comment in regards to the concrete pad crossing on the rail trail should be converted to the same as at Factory Street, and the applicant was agreeable to that. We need to address the bollards, and changing the width to 10 feet on the sheets was agreed to by the applicant. And the monumentation being restored as depicted on Sheet S4 after construction was agreed to. So let's, Joanne, you wanna go through the discussion on the bollards? Because I know there was some discussion with the Fire Department on this issue.
Sure. So the Fire Department had recommended that the bollards be placed in order to keep vehicles out of the area. I did have a conversation with Sarah about this, and DPW would still like to see the bollards installed because they feel even though it's in an area that's open, it's still subject to someone potentially driving down there with a vehicle and harming the people that are on the rail trail. So Sarah may want to elaborate on that, but that was my understanding, and it was more of a safety issue than anything else.
Sarah?
It may be, I was just thinking of where the trail crosses through Shirley Park neighborhood, and I was thinking about those bollards, and I think that this area would benefit from it too, just so that you didn't have a car kind of pull, oops, I made a wrong turn, pull down the rail trail, and then take a U-turn, and it's dangerous. Police, we had a discussion between DPW, Fire, Police, and Planning, and Police also said that they would prefer that the bollards remain.
I, I guess my comment on this would be, it is a significant amount of traffic that goes through there. I don't know that I've seen the bollards that are existing by the, the crosswalks, that they've caused a problem for people using the rail trail. And I'm sort of looking at David to see whether he's nodding yes, no, or just falling asleep.
Remain neutral.
Don't wanna be neutral. And I, I guess I come back to the shell station where we made them move the, you know, we sort of learned from that experience, where the rail trail technically goes behind the, the shell station, and the reality is everybody just crosses right in front of it. So I sort of see the bollards as serving two purposes. One, it keeps the vehicles off, because right now, the rail trail is there, but if you're just driving by, you don't really know what's there unless you're seeing people on it. But the other thing it does is it alerts people on the rail trail that they're coming to some sort of an intersection. So I, I guess I don't have a real problem with the bollards, especially since it's not like we're just gonna be looking at an open field or sand pit anymore. There's gonna be stuff there. Other board members?
Barbara, this is Jim. I've used rail trails in four developed ones, and they have bollards on an intersection.
All right. Okay.
I agree with you, Barbara, the bollards should stay.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from board members on this plan? We've gotta deal with this road issue. Jim, how do you wanna proceed?
Barbara, I have a question. How, maybe, maybe Nick answered. How is the, are they gaining access, legal access across the town land? Are they, do they already hold an easement, or are they asking the Selectmen to grant an easement?
Nick, I'm gonna leave that to you.
We don't have the authority of the Planning Board to grant an easement over town land.
I'm gonna flip to my plan set to make sure that I'm giving you an accurate answer. Not to drag Sarah into this, but I think at some point she may have had some conversation, because there was discussion about where easements would or would not be. Do you have a recollection on that, Sarah?
S2.
S2, everybody.
I unfortunately think those discussions may have happened with Eric.
Okay.
I think I could chime in a little bit.
He, when the proposal first came to us, that was one of my first questions, did the Board of Selectmen need to approve this first before it went to the Planning Board, since they were crossing over, not just crossing over town land, but building a road on the town land. And I was provided with the easement that had been in place before the town had even wound up with this property, and it was very specific that that could be used, that that use wasn't allowed use in that language of that, of that right-of-way or easement.
Was that an easement granted for a family house, or for-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What was the easement, what was the permitted use for which that easement was granted?
Joanne, maybe I can help.
The easement at the time, I believe, was either vacant property or the single-family home. However, it didn't specify that it was just for access to, you know, a house or something like that. It was very broad. And I did have a conversation with Derek on it, and he said-
Number 10.
He was, he did not think that this needed Board of Selectmen approval.
Okay.
What sheet do you want? S2?
Number two.
I think it's Condition 7, is my guess.
So there is, and to reinforce what was just said, it is an existing access and utility easement. There's a blow-up of it, Detail A on Sheet S2. And again, to what Joanne said, it is an access and utility easement-
So it's 10.
To the lot. It wasn't specified to a particular use. So we are, this gets into the road design components we were talking about. We had a constraint to work within that existing easement.
Okay, Tim?
So to answer, I think to more accurately answer Jim's question, number 10 says easement planned for Lot 5, Dee-
planned for lot 5-49-1, Mass Road, Goffstown, from Boston and Maine Corporation to Real Tech Corporation, July 24, 1987, by George Keller Incorporated, plan number 21-240.
And that plan shows an easement, it does not grant an easement. So, the question is, what was, how was it conveyed, an easement deed?
It's listed with a book and page number for recording, so.
No, if there's an easement at a book and page number, it may be it. I just haven't seen it.
So, well, we don't typically bring all the easements for a given lot to the planning board. It's noted on the plan. So, what I think what I'm trying to express and re-forify from what Joanne said is, at the initial stages of the project, it was reviewed, it was determined there is an existing easement there, that that existing easement as written was acceptable for use of this property, and it was not dependent on the type of use.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what the town has decided. I'm not arguing against it.
Also, on the back of your application that was mailed to you is a bunch of easements attached, and one of them is-
We did give it to you. Look at that.
An easement.
What's up?
From, it's Boston to Maine. It's all highlighted when they were reviewing it. I think it was Derek that reviewed all the language.
Do you have a page number, Patty?
It's at the very back, that there's easements all, there's copies of it, a bunch of easements attached that they submitted.
Of the big package.
Yep, thank you.
Why we have a row. If you want to know what's going on, you need to ask Patty. All right, board members, I want to move this along. It is 10 of 11. We have a rule that we're supposed to suspend at 11. I want to see where we're going with this. We have, and I have to admit, I am a little confused as to the conditions and what we're approving as part of subdivisions or the site plan, but I understand that there have been, Joanne, what? Did I hear you?
No, I didn't hear anything.
All right. But I understand that we have, you, Joanne, you had proposed that the waivers be granted in conjunction with the subdivision?
Well, I had originally suggested that they go along with the site plan, but Nick did point out that they are tied in with the road, so, I mean, I think it makes sense to just put them in with the subdivision portion. However, Jim pointed out that once you do that, it is tied to that subdivision and not the site plan.
Correct. And if we were to develop any of that land in the future, we would have to come back with a site plan, and again, we'd be asking for similar waivers if it were deemed to be necessary at that time. The planning board doesn't lose any authority for future applications by granting this.
I think he submitted some separately for the site plan and some for the subdivision, is the way I looked at it.
Yeah, there's one, there's one site plan waiver for the site plan, which has to do with-
Yes, Jim.
It's 10 minutes of 11. We don't make good decisions.
Oh, you make great decisions.
Nick is saying we do great.
I apologize, and I realize the hour is late, but there is a component-
... the mistakes we've made. So, why don't we just continue this, and then we can mull on some of the issues. They're all plausible, I just-
If we have the ability to move forward, at least with the subdivision, because it is tied to the financing of the project, that would be of extreme help. We have conditions that are outlined. We have staff recommending approval. Understood, we haven't even got a chance to talk about the site. We're totally okay with waiting for another night for that. I realize the lateness of hour, but the subdivision is of optimal importance to the client. And we do have the groundwork, I feel like, in place for an approval if the board feels capable tonight.
Tim?
How many continuances have we had so far on this application, requested by the applicant? Multiple?
As we work through the engineering issues, so we could bring you the best plan possible.
Well, the subdivision plan could have probably come a lot sooner than the full plan, so, you know.
Well, it's drainage, they're all tied together, so, you know, it's tough, and I realize it's an ask that we're making, and that we want to make sure that we can move forward with this project. So, I know better than to push a board, but I just wanted to express that we have an applicant who's very excited about being part of this community, and you would be helping him dramatically, or tremendously, with at least allowing the subdivision to move forward based off of staff's recommendations.
I'm waiting for a motion.
Problem is, we're getting the road part and parcel with the subdivision request, and there's a lot of unresolved questions about the road. So, I don't know how we can approve the subdivision if the road is part and parcel of the subdivision request. If it was standalone subdivision request without the road to be dealt with later, that's one consideration. But since the road is, is part of this request and we accept it the way it is, or, or not at all.
I wasn't aware of an outstanding request on the road. I thought we resolved that with the discussion of the existing easement. That was my understanding.
And I'm sure I'm going to move that we continue this until, in our opening day.
God fucking damn you. Are you fucking kidding me?
Hey, you better mute your phone if whoever's using that language on the phone.
We may inadvertently have someone else on the phone who's listening, so our apologies for the disturbance.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this. Are we continuing it to a date certain, which would be the next meeting, the first meeting in August? Jim, you made the motion. Is it to the date in August?
It's resolved, it's resolved.
Huh?
If we're, if the vote is to continue, so that we can be prepared for the next meeting, what do we ask to come back with?
I, okay. So, Jim, is the motion to continue to August 13?
Based on what?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there-
I assume that the other questions are asked, and we'll give an answer.
Okay. I think the applicant thinks he's answered the questions, he's provided the easement documents, which were in your package, and explained the withdrawal of the variance request in front of the ZBA. So, the applicant is wondering what other information is being requested to move forward on this application. Okay. I have a motion to, I have a motion to continue before me. I'm going to call for a roll. With all due respect to the board, I know this is a late meeting, but I actually think the applicant provided, and if there, maybe I let public comment go too long, but it, public comment was kept to a half an hour, to under 45 minutes for the previous application, and I really felt, given the circumstances, that was the best way to handle it. So, I'm going to call for a vote on this. Tim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail? I vote no. Jim?
Yes.
This matter is continued to the August 13 meeting, and I would, we have not gotten to the next item on our agenda. Do I need a motion to continue that, since it has been noticed, and I am saying that we do? So, I need a motion to continue the next item to the August 13 meeting.
I'll make that motion, Barbara.
Peter, Peter has moved it, Tim has seconded it. I'm going to call for the vote. Tim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
I'll vote yes on this one. Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I make up just a general point of order?
Sure.
Understood that it's the lateness of hour, and it's difficult to make those decisions. I'm concerned that this will have a dramatic negative effect on the ability for the project to move forward with the continuation. That is something that we will deal with as a project team, and understood that asking the board to make a decision at a late hour is problematic. Understood that the prior application went on rather long. The one thing I guess I would ask, I don't need to point out the obvious, you're asking us to come back, is there anything that I need to bring you? Like, is there, if there's an outstanding circumstance that we need to resolve? And I'm not saying that to be flippant, I'm saying it to be prepared, because if there isn't, and we just need to come back and say, all right, we're all fresh and ready to go, then that's the deal, and we'll work with that. But if there's something outstanding we need to resolve, it'd be very appreciated to know that, so that it can be resolved prior to the next meeting.
Anybody have any specific requests for this applicant for further information for the next meeting? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right, thank you. Board members, I have one other issue I need to bring up to you. It is in regards to a tree cutting on a scenic road. They have begun drainage work on Shirley Hill Road. In the conjunction with doing the drainage work, they did an area that some of us have sightwalked. In doing so, they cut a root of a fairly large pine tree. There was also some bugs or other insects. I didn't go by to look at the bugs, I looked at the tree. I received a call from DPW, because it's a scenic road, normally that would require a public hearing. We did have a public hearing in regards to all the tree cutting. This was not one of the ones. It was on, it's on the embankment on the uphill side, and when we walked it, it was thought that we would, they would be able to save that one. It is a pine tree. There is concern that it will not be safe, it is, if it is left. In my discussion with the DPW director, I felt that this was more of a public health and safety issue at this point, and that it could be resolved by the Board of Selectmen at their next meeting. They are meeting on Monday, but if the board disagrees with that, I need to let the DPW director know, so we can get this notice for a public hearing at our next meeting. So, having said that, does anybody on the board think that this is a matter of the pine tree, that a root has been cut that DPW feels should be removed, that it should come back to us for a public hearing?
An exemption in the scenic road ordinance that allows public works to cut trees that are on the scenic road if they're deemed a hazard to the public safety, so, as far as I think it-
It needs to go to the Board of Selectmen, so, okay. All right, I, I'm going to convey that consensus to him tomorrow. Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Tim has moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to call for the roll. Tim?
Yes.
Peter? Peter, are you on or off? Kimberly? Kimberly?
Yeah.
Gail?
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Good night.
David?
David, sorry. Okay. Good night, everybody.
I signed a plan.